Perfect. This is a work session for the Board of Commissioners of Weber County on this first day of July twenty twenty four. This is the seven one twenty twenty four. It's the biggest number in history. You'll never see another number bigger than this unless you wait till tomorrow. It's a big, big number and. If we invite those of you who are. Especially Kelly, Kelly. Kelly, let me see, Kelly mute. All right. That's better. Anyway, this is the public meeting, not a public hearing and no public comments will be taken. We have a full quorum of commissioners with Commissioner Bowles seated to my right, Commissioner Faur seated to my left. We have the first item on the discussion today's discussion or our action for approval of the minutes for the commission work session held on the twenty fourth of June twenty twenty four. I'll look for corrections or a motion on that.
To approve those minutes.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Those mo- those minutes are now passed and thanks, Triski, for doing a wonderful job on those minutes very much. Appreciate that. And so our item number two is a discussion regarding Eden Acre Storm Brain Project. Ashley Tolman, Gary Meyer, Sean Wilkinson, Scott Bart is here. We also have Mr. Crockett here. Mr. Crockett, welcome. Thanks for being here and also Jessica, nice to have you here with us as well. Go ahead, Mr. Tolman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. So what we wanted to talk about today.
Oh, sorry. Excuse me. The ultimate Stephanie Russell here. I'm sorry. I couldn't see out of that side. I was going to the right. I should have looked left. Sorry. No, it's okay. Please, I'll get you a tissue to dry that tear because I forgot. Okay. Go ahead, Ashley. Thank you.
So this Eden Acre Storm Drain project is a project we've been working on for a while. It's been designed. We put it out to bid. We received bids. We have not awarded the project yet. But the the bids we received, the amount, the cost of the projects higher than what we had projected. And this project is, you know, it's an impact fee project. We're planning to use impact fees with your approval to help fund this project. And then also we're we're looking for, you know, direction on can we use municipal funds to help pay for this storm drain project? Do we want to shrink the project? So right now the bids are in at about two million.
Oh, wow. Wow.
Yes.
Did you say two million? Is that?
That was a two and a million. Yeah.
Boy, that's almost, wow, that's forty percent more.
Yes, it's a lot more than than what we projected and some of that, the inflation has brought that project up a lot. There's some complications with yards and landscape and the risks associated with being in yards that's brought that project out.
Was I there with you? I've been up there before.
You've been up there and looked at it. Probably, probably. I've been up there.
Bet your feet on the ground up there.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Yes.
We're gonna upsize that pipe from what to what again?
So right now they're currently using to pipe.
And we're gonna put one in because of that extra drain. That's it.
Yeah, and this will take water from an area. We've seen a lot of flooding issues out to Pineview.
Great. So so is it legal to take what running from the from the? Scott, is it legal to take money from the the?
Municipal services.
This is municipal services.
Of course it is.
Yeah. This isn't a municipal service type activity we would do.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation would be with your approval to use municipal.
I want.
The municipal services funds to help fund this this project to get it completed.
Yeah.
It makes sense to get it done.
Do we have the money in the fund?
Yes, we do. That's why Scott's here to speak to that.
Okay, great. Scott?
So we have six million dollars in our municipal services fund right now. This will take one million dollars out of that because if we take the one point two impact fees and we got a little bit of a contingency, ten percent contingency tipping. So now we're at a two point two million dollar project. I'm taking one sixth of my municipal services fund balance towards this project. Now our fund balance is high. We'll be fine with our projections. We don't anticipate this causing any effects on other types of services. So I think we can afford it. Our fund balance is at fifty eight percent. And we like to be between twenty four and thirty six. So we're above that. So we've got this money. The question is, is this the best project to use the million dollars for?
That's where I was going for.
It's an important project, Commissioners. This is one of the ones that we have appointments on our all of our calendars that we go check this. This is one of the last things we check before winter really sets in. It's one of the things we're always monitoring through the course of the winter. As you're aware, we have those goofy warm wind rain on snow events that really send everything into a tailspin up there. If we had this in place, there's a lot of relief this provides. This this puts a lot of extra capacity in place that currently does not exist.
I'm looking for. I guarantee.
In the storm drain world, Commissioner, I don't think anybody's ever gonna give you those that phrase. However, this makes us feel a lot more comfortable.
We don't have mediocre people in our in that engineering department. So that's.
Only the best.
Yeah.
Only the best.
Commissioner Faur, this is kind of in your wheelhouse portfolio comments.
Well, I struggle with this on a couple of in a couple areas. Number one, if we were to wait for incorporation, this goes on the city. We're already getting accused of of not providing any services to the Oregon by reason for the incorporation. And now all of a sudden we've got projects coming out of our ears from, okay, you guys should put guardrails on the pass. You guys should do this. You guys should do this before we incorporate. And I just get concerned. And then now we've got projects down, and I'm talking in my home territory. So I'm talking against myself here, but I'm looking at it from all of Weber County. Is it the right thing to do?
Because because that in that six million dollars we have, one million coming out of that contingency or just sixteen percent or so is that going into one area up there in the three point eight percent of the residents.
Well, this is only considered.
Disproportionate amount of money go into.
But it's only considered the fifteen thousand incorporated residents. Because this this couldn't be used for Ogden City or anything like that.
Got it. What's it's basically fifty fifty.
Yeah, fifty fifty upper lower.
So it's really fifty fifty. So I guess I would like to know, Mr. Chair, what other pro- and I I don't disagree. It's a needed project, but I struggle with some of the other, I guess, events going on. And I would feel like we've short sighted some people in western Weber County. If all of a sudden a project comes out there, guess what? We don't have the fund balance to pay for it, or it puts us in a situation that we now have to raise the municipal service tax again that would fall on west Weber, west Weber, if Ogden City or Fogden Valley incorporates. So I guess I'm in between. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson. And then I'll go to you, Commissioner Faur, or Commissioner Bowles.
So to Commissioner Faur's point, those residents have been paying into that. So even though they are going to incorporate or may incorporate, if they do incorporate this, these are funds that they've been paying over the years, right?
Yeah.
For projects like this. So it would be, I mean, I do see what you're saying. We're about to incorporate. So we won't, you know, we want this done. Not that it's coming from them. It's coming from your department. But on the other hand, they have been paying into that fund.
No, no.
For this kind of.
No question.
This kind of project.
We no, no question about it. I I just get concerned about the size and about taking down that fund balance to the point that we hurt. And so when I think Ashley, you brought up there might be a way to downsize it.
Correct. Couple ideas as we could phase this project and and split it up to a more manageable chunk and and then wait as more impact fees come in to be able to fund the rest of it. It wouldn't resolve the issues we're seeing because we see him kind of at that top end in the neighborhood of San Hill Crane. There's a Lindsay ditch that this project will start at to pull water out of that. And that lot of water ends up running east into that neighborhood and then further out to the east. This would take it straight south. So by phasing it, it would delay the relief from the flooding they see there. But that that would be an option.
So you would start with the Lindsay ditch and move it south into the pine view.
So we would start at the bottom and work our way up to about the valley copy area is kind of a a good stopping.
Which a lot of the flooding in the past two years has come in that Lindsay ditch area.
Yeah, correct.
So I don't see that as a bad alternative. And again, I think that you know, phasing it makes it a little more equal if we have
project that went.
Projects out west. And I'm so I'm not saying cut them out. I'm just saying I'd like to make sure we balance it.
Yeah. Yeah. So we could work our way up to the valley copy area and then wait for more impact fees to make it up to Eden Acres. That's a possibility. There's a possibility of open trenching, leaving some of it open instead of piping the ditch, but that just again kicks the ton down the road.
Yeah. Sean, did you have a comment here?
Yeah, I was just going to to ask these guys to say exactly what Ashley just said. If if we don't do the whole project right now, what effect does that have on the the flooding? And i- if we decide to phase it, is that worthwhile, I guess, in your opinion?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a possibility also of of lending municipal funds until the impact fees come in to cover that.
So I'm looking at it. We've won about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year of impact fees. So this would take every with interest, this would take every dollar in Upper Valley impact fees for the next ten years. So, so if we phase it, really what we're saying is is we're just gonna live with it for the indefinite future. Because who knows what the priorities are gonna be in ten years, you know, with with development up there. So yeah, I just I don't see just with the the amount of money, I just don't see them then being able to pay it back very quick.
Do we have a priority list of things that need to be done, gentlemen?
There there's always projects that need to be done. Do you have a priority list? We have a master plan that shows them. The challenge with those projects, Commissioner, is a lot of times the cost of them just makes them prohibitive to do. For example, we this project came in significantly higher bidding than what we what we anticipated, right? So trying to save up a nest egg to do a project of those size takes time. Takes takes time to to pocket away that kind of money to budget for it and to account for it. So yeah, we do have them. However, the the amounts of what they are are tough, right? They're they're big, high dollar.
Sure. And this is a big deal. This is a couple million bucks. How many other projects up there you would bar there that are this size?
Well, ironically, up in the valley, a lot of the storm drains that happens up there utilizes open channels or a lot of what Mother Nature has created for us up there. And so this one is kind of helping relieve that. If we did phase it, it would get it halfway there, but there's still the rest of the way to complete the project, if that makes sense.
It does, but didn't answer my question. Thank you. If I can go.
Yeah.
How many other projects up there? Not just stormwater related, but other things are up there.
Oh.
Related to to the road, to the to the, you know, what other, how many other projects are up there?
I mean, even even last year, we completed storm drain projects that were issues. We've every year, it it seems like there's, to put a number on it, Commissioner, I'm I'm a little bit elusive to give you exact number of how many projects there would be. But I mean, we've got multiple bridges that are in design phase being looked at right there. We have those that's a big dollar impact. We have multiple turn lane projects that we have anticipated adding capacity, left turn, right turn pockets up there. What we're seeing is just a lot of use in the area from from people on the western part of the county that that go up there or maybe even outside of the county to go up there to recreate.
Salt Lake Davis.
Sure.
Maybe David.
All over.
Yeah.
And and so we're trying to accommodate the capacity that that is needed to accommodate that that higher use, higher traffic numbers, development. As that happens, we'll drive the need for it as well, too. So.
How much state money have we put towards this project? Is there any?
No, this no state money on this one.
You know, I I started down this road when you first opened this presentation, and I just thought this is a disproportionate amount of money again going to small proportion amount of people. But your comment, Commissioner Bowles, made sense that their people are paying into those impact fees and you know, I'm not, and I I also really respect the fact that we've held off some things because we're waiting for people to vote. And you know, and and where this is a another thing, but there there will surely be, if the vote is successful up there, there'll surely be people saying the county should have got this done. The county should have got this done. The county should have got this done. And they'll be, I mean, there's and and the and the new city, if it goes through, will then have to deal with those in property taxes, raising the property taxes to be able to handle those. If we were to do this project here, I think it it very fairly shows that we've just one more thing checked off the list of maybe a hundred items that still need to be done. And there are seven hundred items down here that need to be done. But that does put some of it back up there. So I think for me, I'd be in favor of this. I'd be in favor for let's just get it done and don't don't just wipe. Don't just do it halfway. Let's just get it done. Because it's never gonna be cheaper than it is right now.
Absolutely.
Having been up there and seeing what it does, it does destroy, there's two or three yards up there that it just it just absolutely annihilates up there. But it's two or three people with five, seven thousand people. I mean, but it's just, but it but it handles the water from hundreds more. It just adversely affects. It it's a benefit for the other hundred that too. So that's probably where I am.
Yeah, yeah. Well, two springs ago, that this was a this spot required a lot of attention between the fire department and engineering and a lot of pumps.
Yep.
He's one of the two hot.
I remember.
Mm hmm.
But up there with so that's where I am on it. So we're kind of all over the board between the three of us. What do you want to do?
Well, my other concern, we brought up ridges and ridges and roads up there.
Mm hmm. Bridges.
Ridges.
Bridges.
You've got the USU study that showed what? Ten or fifteen million dollars worth of roadwork over the next period of time.
Mm hmm.
I guess it's a matter of priorities to me. I would rather, to me, it's a safety issue. If if this is, will this hurt our projects on bridges and roads? I mean, there's, to me, transportation roads up there are year round.
I agree.
This is a seasonal need that may or may not. We don't know what the weather's gonna do next spring. I mean, we could have a couple of years like we did before where there is no runoff. And to put two million into a no runoff, and again, I could happen. But we know that the roads will be there. We know that we have major traffic issues both summer and winter, and we know we have bridges that need to be replaced.
Mm hmm.
To me.
That's great.
The area to put it would be where the primary public safety and need is that, right? And if we have unlimited dollars, by all means, do. Yeah. But if you come to me and say, look, we just put two million here. So this bridge is gonna have to wait, or we can't deal with that particular road issue. I'm not gonna be happy. So I'm I'm probably a no vote until somebody can, I'm a no vote until somebody convinced me that we have the necessary funds to do every road project up there between now and whenever, and we have money to do every bridge project because those come above a potential flood. And again, I'm gonna say it again. We don't know for sure what is gonna flood. We have in the past. And it may or may not come about for another five years. So.
Commissioner Bowles.
I just, that's where I'm at. So I'm a noble right now.
I do have a follow up. Considering the other projects that need to be done, I would want to see a priority from your department.
Good.
Knowing that we might be on borrowed time to what we can spend up there. And we're definitely on limited funds. But to your point, Commissioner Harvey, I I don't think we just stop. I I think we put, you know, we we move forward as if we are maintaining
Yeah.
the Upper Valley.
If this requires you to do any more study on a bridge, if the bridge has a higher priority or whatever, I think for me, the first question I asked before I even made this statement was priority.
What's priority?
So I I think that's the that's the direction.
And if this is the top priority, then I think I can get on board with that because, like I said, they've been paying into that municipal services fund and.
Whereas everybody has.
Right.
So so.
So yeah, I don't want to withhold anything, but I but I would want to know it's priority.
If I saw a prioritized list and this was at the top, easy. If this is like summer seventeen and then there's a bridge or two ahead of it, that's which requires you to do whatever the study or in the works, then that's where we need to focus that time is that on that prioritization list. And I don't have any issue where where a a bridge would affect thousands and thousands of people all the time.
On a daily basis.
Instead of tens or hundreds.
Year round.
You know, so.
Well, we know we've got two bridges that have to go in. And I want to make sure that those bridges are not gonna re- so if you can come back and tell me, look, we can do, we've got intersections up there. We've got the roundabout. If you can come back and say, look, Commissioner, this project, these all these projects that we know are critical. Great. But if you can't, I'm, yeah, I think we need to pay attention to that.
To the year round needs you to do. The does that help you?
Do you want to just talk about the bridges that we have?
Yeah.
Because we have money for those from UDOT, correct?
We do. So
one of them is currently underway, the design for it right now. We're set to, last I saw, excuse me, still advertise this fall. We're still on track. There is a little bit of concern utilities wise that we'll be able to meet that schedule. That's always a unknown as to how soon utilities can get relocated. But that is coming. The anticipated schedule was to advertise it this fall. We do have a small match on that one. I want to say it was right around six point eight percent, somewhere in that number. And then there's another one that is just beginning the design phase. It'll be the exact same group of folks doing it, same match, same type of thing. And then
which and that's the four thousand north bridge.
Yeah, four thousand.
Forty one hundred north.
Forty one hundred north.
And then what's the other one?
The other one is south of the fire station, east of.
Seventy nine hundred east.
Yep, seventy nine hundred east. Yep. And then as far as those two bridges are in the valley, we do have another one out west, but that's up in the valley right now.
The the other bridge would be the one over.
The war canal.
The war, yeah.
Well, up in the valley.
Valley.
It's it's over the South Fork.
Yeah, well.
The second.
So I'm saying there's another bridge up there that's not on the list right now. But we've
I I think I think we're in the interest of time.
Yeah.
Because we're over, why don't you get that list prioritized and then let us know if you want.
Sure.
All right.
Absolutely.
And I would, excuse me, so on that prioritization, I would like to know exactly on our match what that is on those bridges. Because to me, the bridges take precedence over.
Yeah.
I don't think anybody argues that.
So.
Yeah.
But I don't, what I don't want to have happen is we fund this and you come back and say, okay, guess what? We just got another five hundred thousand dollar match.
Sure.
That we can't, that now we have to really dig deep for it.
Yeah, great. Can I bring up one other issuer question? So we need to spend these impact fees.
I know that.
Otherwise, we will lose them. Are you do you want us to move forward with a portion of this project so we can spend those impact fees and get this underway? And then if this comes out as the priority, we can continue. And if not, then we stop for a period of time and figure out what to do? Because we don't have anything of any other projects up there to spend these funds on. Is that correct?
Correct.
This this has been what we've been saving those funds for.
This.
This project. Yep.
Then I would be a yes on that. I'm a yes. What are you?
Have to. If we don't have any other projects.
What's our deadline for those funds?
So we are already two years delinquent on some of them. We really do need to get them spent. Otherwise, it's going to go back to the developer.
So your suggestion is we start it, which basically could be a partial start or a full start. I'm okay.
Yeah, great. You got three yeses.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Good. So we'll go basically till we run out of impact fees.
Exactly. Yep.
Is that, that's what I'm hearing, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So we had a million dollars in impact. Uh, yeah.
One point two.
One point two. So we'll say.
One point two.
You got a, you got a one point two goal.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay, great. Let's adjourn this part of the of that, excuse me, let's stop this number two and change the room out for item number three. In the meantime, we'll just go on a brief hold as we change out the room. And also you all can. And also you, y'all can uh.
Again, this is item number three, continuing with our work session again, gend on this July first twenty twenty four. Uh, this is a discussion on the western on the Western Weber West Creek Rezone. Felix Javarino, you're in the room with Charlie Ewer. The Grover, Sean Wilkinson. And then we have Pat Burns here with us, uh, the developer. Uh, and we have some, some of the guests with us. We recognize you and welcome you here, so uh, go ahead, uh. Felix, we're gonna have you start.
Yes, thank you, guys. Um, Mr. As we, what we have for you is just a um a request for a rezone, and they, what they're looking to do is is rezone the property. Currently, it's zone A one. And they wanna rezone it to the, to the R one fifteen. This twenty nine point six six acres. Uh, you can see nine hundred south and sixty one fifty west. That area to the I guess if you're looking to the right, where it's really green and looks kinda slumpy, that's already been rezoned uh, to the manufacturing tech, MT zone. And uh this won't be just right next to that. And here you can see the general plan map showing the area in yellow for West Creek, which is the medium to large lot residential. This is their concept plan. Uh, we have the density calculations. They, they're not quite maximizing the density with this plan, but what I've done is put in the development agreement that they are capped at that thirty six, or that, that eighty six lots. So if they do design, decide to maybe adjust their design slightly to fit a couple more lots, that would be just fine. They just cannot exceed that eighty six. And uh, that way, they, they are following closely with those density requirements of the R one fifteen. Uh, but this, this concept also includes uh, if you can see it fronts on nine hundred south, which is planned to become one hundred and twenty foot right of way. And you can see that they've, they're planning that ten foot pathway along the north edge of nine hundred south. And then you also see that that pathway running straight northward. Um, our intention with that is, and and this design actually works quite well with, with planning's intentions to limit the amount of driveways across uh, nine hundred south and also, well, you would, you would have no driveways acting south. Uh, but also no drivers on that road going straight northward. And so that, that will help to, to help to have a more cohesive uh, trail alignment on both of those main roads. And so some of the things that we're including with the, this far standards into the development agreement. You've got the uh, right away cross sections for those, for those uh, associated right away widths. Uh, street trees would be part of it. Street adjacent, ten foot street adjacent pathways. And then a fence along nine hundred south. This fence would need to be designed to, you know, not a monotonous one colors, you know, solid fence. It would there would be some variations and maybe some pillars and caps and something to make a nice one nine hundred weeks out. Uh, and then also the parks donation, seventy five hundred dollars per lot.
Does that fence six foot tall, six nine feet tall? What is it?
Six foot fence, yep. And then develop, uh, other development standards, uh, typically, what we're trying to do is include more energy energy standards with, with uh these, these developments. And some of the things I'm, I'm pointing with in this particular circumstance with to have the house wrapped in tieback. And that provides a, a nice uh, vapor barrier. Um, just, just a suggestion, and see if it works for the developer when the I figured that would be a good way to um conserve some of the energy that's being used to heat and cool the homes. And then also the water wise landscaping would be part of this as a standard to include uh, the standards that we already have as far as landscaping design, but to go even a little bit further have them do the smart controllers. The smart sprinkler controllers. And those are really nice, because they, they adjust to you know, any upcoming for, weather forecast, if there's rain planned, then they'll skip watering days automatically for you. As, and and then energy efficiency. Um, also, what I've written to the standards is that they, the builder would include a um smart thermostat. So and a lot of these are, a lot of new homes, they, they would prefer smart appliances and smart thermostats, things like that, smart heater. And so uh, this, I think this will be, this will help to um better, better reach that goal of the general plan as far as smart uh, development goes, you know? Now the final slide, I just wanted to just kinda point out that with this proposal, we, we have the request to rezone. We also have uh the development agreement that will be, that will accompany this request and the ordinance that will come along with it as well. So, once we get it before you, I would imagine next week or the following week, whenever I have the, these reports and everything ready, and then we'll, we'll have it before you as a public hearing.
Does that conclude your presentation, Mr. Javarino?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Comments, Commissioner Bolos?
I don't have any.
Comments, Commissioner Faur?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Yeah, dear.
Thank you. So I appreciate your remarks on smart things for the home. What I'm more concerned about, that I think people get concerned about, are you talked about water, but where's the water coming from? Irrigation water, we've got issues out there. Where's the culinary water coming from? And I still have an issue that I addressed. We talked about this two months ago. How do we get people out on nine hundred south, which is, which will be because of the important, gonna be a heavy traffic road? And you're gonna, it looks to me like you've got a, everybody in that subdivision gonna come out in one spot or go in in one spot.
Mm hmm.
Uh how many, how many?
So this, this proposal is, I wanna say it's seventy nine lots, this one here.
There. This is. So, yeah, I just get concerned. That's a lot on, that's a lot of people to put out on one two lane road. So to me, I've got, you know, I've gotta see a better plan for that before I'm gonna be okay with it. That's where I'm at.
That's where you're at?
That's where I'm at.
No questions here. That's where you're at there. Phoenix or Felix?
Yes.
Phoenix is another nice place to watch your, your mother got nice.
Little warm.
What is this?
That is a tissue box.
Thank you for saying that. You didn't call it a Kleenex, which was, which is what I was expecting to come out of you. You, so here's a couple of things that concerned me with what's written in there. You mentioned a special kind of wrap for the house. Don't get brand specific. Allow people to be, cause this is tissue, not Kleenex.
Hmm.
Kleenex just happens to own the market. Does that make sense? So I don't wanna get brand specific. What, my only thing that I've heard of, there's, there's three things on here. Um, if, can you go back a slide or two or three or five? Sorry, I'm gonna turn around and make this guy behind me feel a little comfortable. That's okay. So the dotted line, sorry, can I? Right here, what's that, Felix?
That's the uh, West Davis corridor.
Okay, great. So right there off of nine hundred south would likely be some commercial, right?
Oh, yes.
So likely what's gonna happen is this is probably, if it's like any other major intersection, gonna be higher than third acre lot, right?
Mm hmm.
Our master plan calls for third acre lots there?
Right now. Yeah, we had actually proposed something different right there. Um, it was a little bit late in the process, and I think the planning commission said, hmm, let's wait. Uh, and.
You can always upzone it later.
Yeah, and we can change the plan later. And by the way, this is not a replacement of what Pat showed you guys uh, a month or two ago.
There's word.
Okay, you're going down a good road.
This is, uh, the previous landowner started this property down this path. So I think it's probably pretty smart of Pat to continue going down this path, even though he's still going to continue down the other path that he's already talked to you guys about. So you'll probably see another rezone, general plan amendment coming down the pipeline here in the next few months.
Okay, okay, that's great. The other thing is, is this, would this be called a riparian area? Sorry, Charlie.
Those both, both were wrong.
Okay. Um, I don't know if it would be riparian per se, because it's not technically um, the riverway. But it exists like it does because it is uh, built for night irrigation system.
Okay.
And we have it on the map as we do uh, with the green space, because the intention is to keep it green, open, protected, similar to a riparian.
Would it be, would it be wise then, I was, I think at six foot's wider? I worry about deer crossing. How many access of deer gonna have access to the road? You know what I mean?
Yeah, makes sense.
So as we keep in mind the fences and things like that, there probably ought to be some design in that fence, so the deer doesn't wanna go that way necessarily. And and create even more on that, that's what's gonna be a big, major thing there.
We can paint some deer crosswalks if you want to.
Yeah, that's.
I've heard about those. Okay, the other thing had to do. Go back one more slide, we, Felix?
Yes.
So really what we're doing, let's go back and after you go forward, one, two slides. So really what you're doing is you're gonna, this subdivision, you're gonna have them go this way, so that piece of open land that's right there, you're gonna force future developments to put the bridge over that river, is that right?
That's the right. See, go back.
You go back, you complete two more. Look at that.
That's just a sleeve.
That's what I mean, but it's gonna have to be ditched or covered. It's gonna have to be piped or something.
Yeah.
So really, this, what's gonna, what's gonna happen is, is it's gonna force that developer to put that in. At least when it comes before us, it is, cause it's, something's gotta go west there pretty quick.
Mm hmm.
And so, and maybe the number of lots, but I want, for planning staff, I want you to hear that today from me. I'm gonna wanna see something go west. I just spent all morning talking about going west.
Right.
On another deal. You, you understand, I, I like the idea that you've got an out on that side.
Hmm.
So uh, please keep that in mind. I don't wanna make that prohibitive for the next guy coming in, and maybe the next guy may be the same guy. We don't know, but just just be aware of that.
Can we make that an order? The next guy is me.
No, that'd be great. Put it on the back.
I, there's a lot of other things. There was one more thing that you put in there. You put the wrap on the house, and there was one more thing, oh, the smart thermostat.
Mm hmm.
Is there an HVAC guy out there now that just puts in a dumb thermostat still? No, I mean, most of the guys that do HVAC work, I just, I worry about so much government. We put so much government on, I, I hate doing that.
Yeah.
So I wanted to talk.
If we're gonna get that, I'm gonna get clean air in homes, and I can tell you where that's gonna go next to get a clean air in a home, and it's not gonna be with an HVAC system. You got what I'm saying? Without saying what I wanna say?
We haven't said.
Nope.
I'm glad you brought that up, Commissioner. I wanted to make sure we, we talked about that. With these development agreements, trying to hit some of the benchmarks that the general plan talks about um, in regards to building efficiencies, um, air quality and all that. There's a definitely delicate balance between overregulation versus uh, not getting what the general plan asks for, and we wanna be sensitive to that. I can guarantee um if it's not this project, it'll be a different project, who you get a developer who takes the project to paper lots. And then another developer picks the project up, or another contractor picks things up. They're not gonna see that development agreement as I voluntarily agreed to put in this expensive stuff. They're gonna see it as the county telling me what to do. And the um, Humpers Builders Association, the Property Rights Coalition, they're already pretty strong in trying to keep cut, costs down. So the more we ask for clean and efficient buildings, I think the louder people might get. Even though we had, we have an argument, a good argument that says the developer volunteered to do it this way, it wasn't our requirement. It still is gonna look like our requirement, cause we're the ones enforcing it.
I'm just making some comments, Felix, as we continue to to morph of the relationship and things like that. I want you to know where I'm coming from.
Yes.
I've been, I've been absolutely very neutral on most of this stuff, but when I start seeing those pressures like that, um
Yeah.
Uh, it's just, it, it sends a it sent it, uh, puts something in there, and, and you did a great job on the presentation. But you used a product name for the wrap. And you used, and you used a smart thermostat, and I'm glad you didn't say one of the brand names, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So just if you'd keep that in mind. Look, for the most part, from my position, I trust you guys. You guys are the, it's where the rubber meets the road. And what you say goes, and I wanna support you in everything you do, but let's not get to the point where we're overregulating.
Now, when we get into these overregulations too, it becomes an enforcement issue when we get to that stage of the game. And that's gonna be, you know, a little bit of a challenge when we start looking at these things. Um, you know, who regulates that? And enforces and make sure that happens.
We're already, you're, you're already gonna put something in there with regards to dark sky stuff and all the other stuff, right? So let's just, let's not get too carried away.
Yeah. Would you guys be comfortable right now, so in twenty twenty one, the state adopted a new energy code, but then they rolled it back for residential, as far as I understand, to the twenty fifteen codes.
Hmm.
Um, twenty fifteen code is a performance based code where if you do this kinda window and this kinda installation, as long as everything adds up to a certain value, uh, efficiency value through your res check, um, then Stan signs off on it and you move forward. Would you be comfortable but at that time, the state said, we're gonna do twenty fifteen um, efficiency values plus one percent per year is what Stan tells me. And so I'm curious whether or not you guys would be going just to a higher percentage, where we're not saying anything about um, efficiency of, of, for uh appliances, gas appliance, we're not saying anything about smart thermostats or anything. We're just saying, do whatever the state says you need to do plus two percent or plus five percent, whatever that number.
But we know they're already gonna get a low NOx water heater, and we know they're gonna get, I mean, you can't even buy that other stuff anymore, right?
Not available.
Right.
And switches and plugs, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know. Your, what are your feelings on that, Gage?
Well, I get concerned about trying to design the home.
Yeah.
None of this is even gonna be possible without two things. Water and sewer. We haven't, we don't have sewer there right now.
Right.
So why are we going down telling these people how to design a house until they have a place to flush their toilet?
That's right.
You know, you're gonna tell them what branded toilet to get and what faucet to get, but where's it go?
Right.
I think you're missing the point.
Yep.
So until we have in, so it comes down to infrastructure. Until you have infrastructure that are worked, why are we having these discussions? And so, water, sewer, and roads.
Yeah.
Get that solved. Let the homeowner take care of what style toilet they want, or what shingle they want on their house. You're going too far in the weeds, in my opinion. But I don't, but you're overlooking the, the infrastructure. Show me where the sewer's going. We talked about the Davis corridor. Well, that could be twenty, thirty years off.
Or fifty.
Or fifty. So let's talk about what we have right now, not try to design something and tell everybody what shingles to put on their house, until we have a toilet to flush. And one thing they may wanna do is have water into that house and be able to get out of their driveway and drive down the road. So I'm, yeah, obviously.
Chair or Commissioner Bowles?
I don't. The rezone is separate from the approvals that require the sewer and the water. I, I'm okay with the rezone. Um, because the other approvals aren't gonna come unless they can do sewer and water, the other infrastructure. So I'm okay with the rezone. As far as the energy efficient requirements. I, I don't understand why, why you want to increase the state standard. I mean, I would be okay with just saying that it meets the state standard. I'm okay with that.
And they all have to meet the state standard right now.
And that would be just fine. Once the state sets a standard, we're obligated by law to follow it anyway.
And I don't know why we wanna o- overreach even more and make other requirements.
And we definitely don't need to. Uh, general plan talks about, um, uh, accepting higher efficiency buildings so that we've got lower, um, air quality issue in the future. Uh, but none of that is mandatory, none of that's required.
Doesn't entertain residential, really.
It doesn't have to. No, we can say it only pertains to commercial. It's not specific.
Residential.
My point is, is mostly appliance, most, almost every appliance that goes in a home today have already covered that. You're, I think you're adding redundancy to the process. And so that's really not, I don't know if it's a county, I don't know if it's a county thing to, to go after.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That'll simplify things for us. So we're, we're okay with being more simple on that.
Great.
As far as other rules go, just to be clear, you're, you're right when it comes to sewer and water, all that has to be demonstrated at subdivision. But if we want additional rules to apply, whether it is any of this other stuff or whatever else, if it's above and beyond what our current codes are asking for, we wanna get that through the development agreement process. That's kinda why it's on the, the front end, but we're talking about those details. So we need to get those details in the code, uh, if, if we wanna wait to the backend.
But why would you? Excuse me, Mr. Chair. We, we've got a major water study being, going as we speak by Weber Basin, where you have a sewer study seem to come out. To draw little things on the map until we know what those water studies say and when that could be provided is premature. And, and then what I get concerned about is once you do a rezone, okay, I know how development works, okay? The minute that's rezone, the value of that property goes up peak. Somebody can go out and sell that property to somebody else from out of state. They come in now and say, look, we've got this seventy-nine lot that you approved, now give us sewer and water. Okay, I don't wanna be in that game. Okay, I don't think that puts Weaver County in a good position to say, okay, why did you rezone this? Why did you approve seventy-nine lots prior to having the infrastructure in place? Weaver County, go out and do it. Now, that would probably be a lawsuit, but I, to me, you're putting the cart before the horse.
And we could easily not approve this and just say, this is not the time for this until that infrastructure, uh, you know, does.
Well, to me, it's definitely premature until you get the water study and the sewer study, because they may say, look, it could be fifteen years before we have sewer there. I, so that's where I'm at. Well, we don't, I'm against the rezone until we have those studies done.
That's good.
I'd like to know where that goes. I'd like to know where the infrastructure is, so we have, we have a certain, that keeps, that keeps the developer safe. And although it may not be as timely, but that's where I'd like to go. So when you bring those things to us, you keep making sure those things are in place first, so we know those answers. That would be helpful. I mean, we know what, out on that other part of the West, because we dug a trench dig enough to be able to take all the sewer into have, right? So would you make that happen, please?
I'll go get my shovel.
Thank you.
Yes. An update on the water and sewer studies. Weber Basin's, uh, comprehensive water study that includes the West River Corridor will be released in two months. So that's coming out in two months. Uh, the West Weaver, uh, wastewater, uh, study is in the process of being put together. Um, it will go to the legislature in January for potential funding. So we will know by March if that comprehensive, uh, study gets funded. So that's where we're at with that study.
There you go. Yeah, that's great. I gave you what you need for today.
Little bit of a timeline.
Thank you.
Well, can I make some comments? So to answer your guys' opinion, the biggest question is that sewer and water, honestly. Um, I've spent millions of dollars buying this ground, millions of dollars buying all the other ground out west that I already own. So I'm fully vested in getting sewer and water out there. I'm working with the Black Pine, with the, uh, Peterson Group. And in order for me, I'm putting my pig together for I, um, I have to, and that will be for all three of my big projects that are right in this same corridor and working with the, the, uh, Peterson Group, on their sixty-six acre, which is right next to me. So you guys said you're not happy, you're not comfortable doing a rezone until that's done. I promise you, I'm going to get it done. I have millions and millions of reasons to get it done. My pig will come in place. I also need your rezone done. That my pig's coming to place. And that is millions of dollars more for the sewer and the water. Where I can put all of mine for each lot that I have, and put those impact fees into getting all the sewer done out west. And as you guys know, with the West Bridge Project, I'm the biggest developer out there. I have more control, more bots, and working with most people out there than anybody else. But, uh, we already had three meetings with the Black Pine Group. We're working on their sewer. The lift station is going right there. We're discussing of possibly moving the lift station a little closer, further west.
I can't interject right there. That lift station cannot be moved.
So we are working with the ARPA funds to see if it can be or can't be. Okay, so whether it can be moved or not, I'm just telling you guys, that was one thing we were looking at. And the reason to move it further west, lift station goes like this, right? You take a lift station, further west, you can put the lift station. The more you can get sewer into that further west without putting another lift station. Yeah, I'm not, we can discuss sewer later. I'm just telling you, we are, the, the developers right along this corridor are all working together to, to help put all that together as well. So I guess my confusion is why you would not rezone this project to help, like, the M and T zone is already there. The ARPA funds are already there. Everything is already happening. Rezoning this is just adding more funding, more outside investments, everything to the whole West River. They're not rezoning this. I, I don't understand why you would rezone some parts, but not this part, which would help directly impact all of the same concerns.
Let me, if you, Commissioners, are you okay if I speak? When the, the last time we did a rezone, to my memory, they came in with those plans in place, the sewer and the water in place on how that was gonna go. Before this comes again, could you, could you come in with those plans and be prepared with that? That's basically, I think that's what we're hearing today, is we'd like to know, this is where the water's coming from, this is where the sewer's coming from, this is the direction it'll flow. And you may be able to get some insight or some extra information from that study from Weber Basin. And then with regards to the sewer outflow with LMSA or from central Weber. So you have those things. I just think it's not quite, it's not, it's not quite to the point where I'd feel totally comfortable with it. I mean, I'm pretty close, but I'm, and I respect the fact that you'd need those things to be able to, to go to, uh, plat first, but I'd like to see a little more on there first.
Guys wanna see that in a work session?
Absolutely, and I'm happy to have Mr. Burns be able to comment on it too, so if he comes, so that'd be, that's where I'm hoping to get. Does that sound, does that sound pretty much what you're saying?
I like a little more dependent definition where we're going. And we got a lot of studies going on right now that I think will help direct planning as people come in. So, okay, look, you're, you're fifteen years out from sewer, whatever it may be. You should probably maybe look at a different site or, so we lead people in the right direction.
To your, to your respect, your reputation precedes you, and we understand you're a man of your word. That's, that's not, but we have had experiences in the past that have taught us that either, this is a important process by which, so we don't get hung up in the future in case something else happens. So we have to protect the county moving forward based something were to happen. That's why. Anything else? Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Any else? Okay, let's move on. We'll move the room then. I'll conclude this item. Come on, let's come on in. Sorry, we kept you waiting. All right, uh, our next item is a discussion regarding Weber County Career Service Council member. We have, uh, we're fortunate. We are fortunate to have the ambassador of excitement, Portland Erickson here, we call him Mr. Ambassador, and Emily Wild, who will, uh, lead this discussion today. Ms. Wild, go ahead, please.
I thank you, Commissioners. So, um, I'm just here because Kevin McLeod, who has been a member of the Career Service Council, and his appointment expired June thirtieth. And he would like to renew for another three-year term to be on the Career Service Council, Weber County.
Mr. Bowles, I, I know you're probably trying to do both things at once here. So, so, uh, do you have a comment on Mr. McLeod, continuing on the Career Service Council? Commissioner Faur?
Well, I do have a comment. Does anybody else been notified this or have the opportunity to apply?
So, uh, we have not officially put it out there, nor do I believe in the ordinance. We have them apply. There's basically just three criteria, so they, they have to know, you know, the merit system, they have to have, um, let's see here, live in the county and may not hold, be holding another government office. So, so those are the only three criteria. Um, but to my understanding, Portland can review this, there's, there's not a requirement that it gets posted out there. So I did not, um, post a notice for anyone else to, I guess, put in their interest.
Well, that's my only concern, Mr. Chair, is that anytime we make an appointment, I think it's, um, that we should do our due diligence and, you know, I don't think we would appoint somebody to a planning commission without, and I know that's under a different ordinance, but it's really, it's the same thing. If we make appointments, to me, it should be open to the public. It shouldn't be preferential. It shouldn't be, hey, this is our friend, so. I mean,
Sure.
I, I would just say that, just on a, kind of an overall view of being open to the public, I like to be transparent. I would like this open to the public, but, you know, I've been to one before, so I'm okay. But I, I just think, without, you know, opening this up, and he may be the best qualified, he may not. There may be somebody out there, but if we don't ask, we don't know.
Sure.
So that's where I'm at.
How often do they meet?
Rarely. So.
We have a, do we have an impending need coming up?
We, we do. Um, so we have an appeal that we received on Friday on a disciplinary action that was taken on a member of the sheriff's office. And so typically what we do is we reach out to the career service members and ask that those get referred to an ALJ judge, um, to actually hear the appeal hearing. So, um, other than that, there are a few other circumstances, uh, if someone wanted to appeal, such as if they didn't get, you know, a position and they felt like they were unfairly treated that way. Those are really rare that that happens. So, um, it's mostly just disciplinary decisions, and we do have the one that we got on Friday, plus we've got one going right now with the ALJ. So there is a need to, you know, have them now.
When does this term expire, I guess?
Three years, so.
So what's our?
His, his expired June thirtieth.
Okay.
So yesterday, and, and he continues in his role until we have a replacement.
Well, I guess as it be my question, could we put him, could we let it continue until we've had?
Yeah, so he continues in his role until we have a.
I don't wanna stop progress, but I like to err on the side of transparency, but.
If I may supplement your answer a little bit, I've been working with HR probably seven years, maybe eight years, and I've never known of a Career Service Council meeting where they actually got together because I'm not aware of any of these other types of appeals that would have gone to them even happening in the time that I've been working with HR. But the employee discipline appeals have always since then been referred to an administrative law judge. So I've zero Career Service Council meetings or hearings that I've been involved with since I worked with HR. So as far as frequency, I mean, that can change. I'm not gonna, hopefully it won't, but, you know, there could be reason for it, but it's been sort of a formality having in existence because we've had the.
We're required by law to have.
We're required by law, but, but they're also required by law if HR decides to go through an ALJ to refer it to the ALJ.
You have an issue if we post it for three weeks?
I don't have an issue. I, um, I think we filled this position or made this appointment once since I've been in office and we didn't open it up, and that's why.
Yeah, so a, a year ago, we had two openings and Tracy, oh, Taylor and, uh, James Ebert are on the committee, so they're on their year one of three.
Right.
And then Kevin is.
That's why I didn't raise a red flag to me, but, but I'm okay if we post it.
Go ahead, post it. Post it for three weeks, and just to say we did, and if somebody else comes up, great. If not, I'm totally okay with Kevin McLeod being in there. He's a great guy, and he's, he's got a lot of good background. Because most of these, uh, things come up in the sheriff's department, he's got experience there as well. He's also got experience in property management. And, and Ebert's has some law experience, and so I think we're well represented right now. It's a great balance. But for you, Commissioner Faur, if, if you want it, we'll open it up and we'll, if, uh, Christie, I'm sure you're listening in, but if you'd get with Stacy, let's get that opened up so we can get that open from the first to the twenty-first or something like that.
Okay.
If nobody applies, we know, we've done our, we've said, hey, we posted it.
There you go.
Okay.
That work okay with you? And after that, when you get that done, if you'll just bring that back in a work session, brief work session, we can get that finished for you.
Sounds good.
Anything else, Ms. Wild?
That is it.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Let's move this.
Thank you.
Keep this going. Our next Commissioners, we'll have just a moment to change out the room. Portland, are you pitch hitting now?
Uh, Chris should be back, but I was invited to the twelve thirty.
Santa Claus should be coming, but we, until we, right?
Yep.
Oh.
I'm gonna have a weird, you know, change. Maybe change my password.
Okay, good afternoon. How are you? Lynn Keough.
Hey, how are you?
What's happening?
You get something to eat? We're good on, on that project we're working on now.
Get some of this good stuff over here.
I hear all that.
They're not showing up?
No, they are. It's running a little bit late. I think. Miscommunication about the calendar.
Good, you mind if I sit over here? There's a lot of people out there, so I assume this will be taken. We do that.
Hey there, how are you doing? We've got Grover coming back, right?
Yeah, I think.
So nice and glorious.
Until it's not.
To be honest, so it must be, you know, it's refreshing now, but.
I ran into a guy Saturday that had. Pack the windows.
Oh, interesting.
Axles on.
Yeah.
Really? Oh, come on. You sound like my veterinarian father.
I don't even know him. We're best friends.
He would love your buffalo, I can tell you that, or your bison.
Different than a Highlander.
It is much different.
Thinking. Okay, Stephanie, sorry, can I interrupt? We're gonna move on with item number. Charlie, it's okay, let me go back to here. We're here. We're gonna move on to item number five on our. Uh, commission meeting work session, which is held on this Monday, the first of July. This is a discussion regarding the infrastructure requirements for subdivisions. Uh, specific to fire suppression. Uh, we are gonna be led today by Tammy Adelock, who just stepped out of the room for a minute. David Reed. Jared Taylor, Felix Jeverino, Summer Day, Ryan Klingy, Gary Myers. Tucker Wade, Rick Grover, Charlie Ew, Sean Wilkinson, Courtland Erickson, Liam Keel, and Chris Crockett. I would normally start with Ms. Adelock, but Sean.
Thank you, Commissioner, but I, I believe it's appropriate for you to start with Ms. Adelock today.
Great, and we'll just pause until she steps back in the room. I'm not used to being yelled at by the teacher. Well, I kind of waited. I waited for about three or four minutes and you just, you, you still had a lot of fuel in the tank.
Now, look, you have all the time.
I used to say, Mom, why, why, why do you only get mad at me? She said, your voice is the loudest.
Kind of the truth.
I gave kind of a decompression report to Rick Grover with regards to our, my meeting I talked to you about this morning, so you get with him.
Oh, good, right.
Cam, you're up on deck. We waited for you to start. I know you're waiting for Weber Fire. I do wanna, I hate to have everybody else wait. Um, we have another update. We just don't wanna get too far behind it on agenda.
This may need to come back before you for a more detailed discussion with Weber Fire District present. But I know that their main concern in recent discussions is we review these development applications that come in, especially in the valley. We've got a lot of subdivisions going in without, um, without hydrant systems in.
So they put in, they put in the sprinkled system in their home.
They do, and the problem is when you have these big areas of land that develop one lot at a time. It becomes difficult for Fire District to pull the trigger and say, we want an entire hydrant system for one lot. Um, from a planning perspective, we're looking at build out potential. We're looking at potential twenty, thirty more lots in the future. And so I think Fire District is, their concerns have grown to a point that they want to just start requiring this. Right out the gate, going forward with every lot that develops. Have a hydrant in place, knowing full well that there may be four more lots or a dozen more lots that come down the line in the next few years. One at a time, and then they can just tie into that same system.
Commissioner Faur, you've had comments on this. It kind of puts the, puts all the onus on the first guy. You wanna talk about that for a minute, and hopefully the Fire District will be here, but.
Well, I understand the Fire District's position, but you know, I understand from a development homeowners' position. Is it may not be pot, you know, may not be financially feasible to, to do the entire subdivision. Um, with fire hydrants to the point that they're satisfied until that subdivision fails. So, um, I don't, what's, what's planning's position on it right now? I mean, do you require that the, all the infrastructure be in place?
Not work by, we just take the, we just take the Fire District's recommendation.
Okay, so you don't have, you don't weigh in on it. What, and so the Fire District is coming back in and saying, complete the, yeah.
Yes. And we, we've had, this has been a while, but we've had subdivisions not moved forward because the Fire District required. A certain number of hydrants and the developer was unwilling to put those in.
Yeah.
And so the subdivision died.
Uh, but if you, again, if you had this, if you had a fire hydrant within. And I guess it depends on where they are in that subdivision. Uh, it makes no sense to. You know, run the entire line and put a hydrant at the back and then come back in and dig your hydrants in later, which could happen. But to, to me, we need to come up with a plan that works for both, Mr. Chair. I don't. I, I concede the Fire District, but I also see that it's a burden for a developer to do the entire project.
Homes above so many square feet get a fire system anyway, right?
Right.
Fire suppression.
Which is how big now?
Over, I believe, five thousand.
Five thousand feet, state code, I think, unless it's changed.
Well, would the, you have any comments, Commissioner Bolus?
No, no, I don't, I'm looking here in the Fire District.
I, I would too, but to me, it would seem like a, a fire suppression system in the home would go in no matter what the square footage unless. Unless they're willing to put in a hydrant within so many feet of their residence.
So can I cite a specific example that's triggered this discussion again? We've got a. Previously approved three lot subdivision in Ogden Valley in a three acre zone, and each of those parcels is seventeen, fourteen acres, seventeen acres, and thirty five acres. And now we've got a subdivision application in to put a fourth lot in there. And at this point, Mr. Reed is going, okay. How many lots do we get to before we say we've gotta have a hydrant system in this? Because the build out, they could get several more, I have lots out of this.
He's also looking at, um, areas that have done exactly what Tammy's saying, but has, they've actually gotten to build out. And he's saying, well, what? I didn't tell these guys they had to. I didn't tell those guys they had to. I didn't tell those guys, or those guys, or those guys. But boy, we're to a point now that we should have told everyone. Uh, so the question is, when is that trigger? Is it that last guy, or is it the first guy, or is there a way that we put in a mechanism? I hate to say deferral agreement, but maybe something like that where everybody pays for the system in time. Oh, that's what you do.
Alright, yeah, maybe. So, Summer, you have a, you're here. What's your interest in this?
Well, so we're here because we approve the non-public water system. So anytime it's on a public water system, it's a private well, we improve it. And there are a lot of nuances when somebody's developed on a well, as you can imagine, when they don't have liberty pipeline or. Being waterworks up in the Brogna Valley, and they wanna do fire suppression, and they're on a well that maybe only produces five gallons per minute. It makes some real interesting engineering consideration for how they're actually gonna do fire suppression. And I think, and this is where Dave's know how, I don't have it obviously, but my, if I can remember right, it was. Like a thousand gallons per minute that these fire suppression systems had to put off for a two hour duration. I might be. I'm, I think I'm close to right.
I think it's sixty minutes.
I think it's sixty minutes. And so how somebody on a well might accomplish that would be through a storage tank. So it would have to be sized pretty immensely for a while. I mean, this would be a large storage tank. And then they would also have to install a pump, more than likely to produce that thousand gallon per minute. So it becomes a very, very high cost that that person has to incur just to have the storage to. Do fire suppression in that home. And we are seeing a lot of subdivisions on, uh, private wells, non-public water systems. Um, and we're just coming across this quite a bit where the developers just haven't even considered fire suppression. Uh, haven't really put any money into engineering or consideration of how they're gonna accomplish these tasks. So we can definitely see what Dave is saying by, you know, which is that. People are kind of kicking the can down the road, and there's not a lot of thought to how they're gonna achieve this infrastructure build out on a lot of subdivisions.
Fascinating. Sure wish Dave was here. Hate to have the whole thing.
He's on his way. I apologize. I don't know if he was CC'd on this meeting invite for someone, isn't there?
Question if I might, since we're kind of on, so it's summer, I. I mean, there's no way that anybody's gonna be able to give enough capacity off a. Typically of maybe a two or four inch well to do five, I mean, that's reality. So we're kidding ourselves. We think that somebody could do, number one, they're either not gonna do it, or they're gonna say they did it, and so.
Yeah, yeah, I don't disagree with that.
So I don't see how we can even, i- if that's our goal is to have fire suppression, uh, you know. We know that it can't happen, at least I know that it can't happen on a typical two or four inch well. I mean, it'd be difficult to do on a six inch well with a, you know, five hundred thousand gallon tank.
Yes, yes, um, and so.
Is that by ten, you know, now you're talking Weaver Basin Sex Project.
It's kind of stretched it a little bit. You went a little too far, but I give you.
But we have had some subdivisions that have really considered this, um, like we have, can I use subdivision names? There's no problem with that. Like, we have a project called Arrow Leaf, and they did a great job in the engineering. I think they. Have a total of three to four well servicing, I think, an eleven to thirteen lot subdivision. They have a large holding tank at the top. They have, you know, the slope or topography, so they're gonna get good head pressure, like. They really considered how they were gonna do this, and I think that they really, um, accomplished all of these things. We have other subdivisions where you just can't get them to consider it at all, and really, we find ourselves having to reject. Uh, the water systems just to even get them to say, like, consider what we're asking, which is. Show us how you're gonna service multiple lots, because they don't wanna spend any money on infrastructure, and that's just drinking water, let alone. Fire suppression. And I think fire suppression to me is the one where there's a lot of high costs to the developer to ensure that they have that capacity. For fire suppression, so.
And I can. So, Portland, are, are we required under state code to, in. Is the county required under state code to enforce the fire suppression with five thousand square feet? And who, so whose responsibility is that? If we were to approve a lot or a building permit. And we couldn't just, or we could guarantee through summer that they've got necessary. Water capacity for that. Are, are we on the hook? Is the health department on the hook? Who's on the hook?
The ordinance requires, and this may not be that precise question you're asking, because it's not state code, but our county code requires. As one of the subdivision improvements that the developer provide a letter. From the Weber Fire District approving the fire protection method prior to final approval of the subdivision by the planning commission. Um, and, and so the ordinance puts that on the Fire District to make that approval. State code, I don't know. I haven't looked into that yet. Um, but. Even within phased subdivisions, we have a county code that speaks to the responsibility of the developer or the applicant. To be responsible, and this is again for phased subdivisions, for coordinating the installation of utilities, streets, water lines. Fire hydrants and all other required improvements with buyers of lots. So. We talk about it a couple of times in our county code. Um, and that's been my understanding all along. Is that the state code puts that burden on the Fire District, the Fire Authority. And so by our county code, putting that burden on them as well, we are relying on them because they're the experts, and I. Would be hesitant to step in and add any kind of requirement or adopt any requirement for the county to enforce. Outside of what the Fire District approves or doesn't approve, because then we take upon ourselves. Sort of all of the experts or the judges of what is appropriate. Um, we may have governmental immunity, but it'd be better, in my opinion, not to even go there and have to rely on that. Um, as far as risk is.
So you answered my question, really, it's a Weber Fire District, but he couldn't make the decision. And so to me, it's kind of out of our house.
I think that's, I think if Dave were here, he'd, he'd say that he'd like to see the county and the Fire District have kind of a united front, even though he knows. That this is his authority. I think under the statutes, from what I recall discussing with him. He's got the authority to ask for hydrants when. Um, I think he just wants to make sure that it's not gonna make you guys upset, um, if he starts pushing that envelope.
Okay, I get it.
I can do a quick, uh, search and see if the. County Land Use and Development Act, um, says anything about fire authorities. It looks like. Twenty results. I'll skim through them real fast, um.
Well, while we're here, uh, wait, I'm wondering if we, commissioners, it might be good to just pause this discussion. Uh, and then we'll change out the room. Uh, we have some other things that people are here to be heard and. And then if we, we'll put you back in and, because we're gonna push somebody else back, but let's, let's have you, let's have you exit. We'll just go ahead and change out the room and hear number, item number six, which is a Rocky Mountain Power update. Christie, if you're out there, if you would, you mind? Sending in.
So are we coming back in?
Yes. You'll be back in in a minute.
Yeah, if you can pull up any code. Portland, while you have a break here and, you know. I would almost guarantee that states put it on the back of the county.
Well, your guys did a great job last night. Our power went out about.
Ten thirty, it's pleasant view, okay. Yeah, I bet.
Definitely getting us busy.
All right, now I get to behind the scenes. The inside story.
Yeah. That's my uncle Paul used to say, now you know the rest of the story. Commissioners, we're going to move ahead now with our sixth, item number six in our agenda, which is a Rocky Mountain power hu- power. Update with the great Kirk Nygro here to see us. Thank you so much for joining us, Kirk.
You bet. Appreciate being able to come and, and talk with you and make sure that we've got a good partnership, which it's, it seems like we've got. It's been great. So uh, from our standpoint, being able to communicate, getting answers and working with the guys is, it's really been. I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. And so this meeting is just to ensure that we're maintaining that partnership. Uh, what is it? A garden you got to nourish? And so we want to make sure that we're communicating, communicating to you guys and making sure that your needs and concerns are being addressed. So I have a, a past community performance plan from twenty twenty. About right here. And generally on this is just, you know, if it's not, we, we like to put things in writing because then it makes it more succinct. And uh, on this performance plan, really the first couple of paragraphs are just saying your premier partner. Uh, we want to be making sure that we're doing things well. Uh, the main, the, the main concerns really are kind of those bullet points of what we discussed last year that's important to uh, the county. And uh. And I, I think that's uh, you know, just want to make sure that those are still your concerns and if we have to add anything else or make any amendments.
I'm going to speak uh, first, if that's okay. I keep hearing that you, that Rocky Mountain Power can't provide big sizes of transformers or subdivisions. Or these big, big units that are a year or two or five out. Is that right?
So correct, um, so any three-phase transformers that are pad mounted. So those are not line mounted, but underground, uh, they're currently about eighteen months to two years out. Um, and that is a, it's a national backlog. Uh, we're not the only ones that are feeling that pressure. Uh, they're just, the transformers are not available due to kind of a new supply lines. And supply lines that we used to be able to have access to, we don't have any longer.
Did they all go away during COVID?
No, we can't purchase from an adversarial country, anything that's in our bulk system. And so that prevents us from purchasing, you know, purchases from China is listed as an adversarial coun- country. So one of the larger suppliers are, they're no longer available. And that's a national, uh, I believe it was a president decree, uh, Trump during twenty twenty. Uh, put that in place, and so that's, that's affected every utility through the nation. So my understanding is new supply lines are being developed. I think South Korea is in the process of ramping up, but it just, it takes several years to kind of get that, that backlog caught up. And get those processes in place. So you are, yeah, you're correct.
That'd be the only one that I've got. Kirk could be that, that Commissioner Bolos, what do you have?
I think I have any additional ones.
Commissioner Faur.
I would just say, uh, congrats, appreciate your support for the weed board. Obviously, our public utilities, railroads become very, UDOT becomes very important to us as we look for weed control. And I know our staff's been working with your, you know, spent, and I looked at the Ogden Valley and you're, you know, you got a major easement through there that. Sometimes has a little dire load under it. Uh, anything, anything you can do to continue to help us. In that vein would be very much appreciated. So, and obviously that goes along with fire mitigation as well, which I know. You've taken a change in policy on your, uh, which you might explain.
Yep.
To the commission, I, I bet you're going to do that, but that could become a phone call for, you know, for us, so.
It will become phone calls, um, from what I'm gathering, yeah. And if you want, so uh, we kind of have a three-pronged attack uh, for dealing with reducing wildfire risk. And handing out there. And uh, a few of these you're aware. Um, two of these kind of already been in place, the, the enhanced uh, uh, safety settings. So those are in our elevated fire risk, and I think you and I discussed that last year.
We did.
That those were coming in and I did a town hall meeting in Huntsville. Given that the Huntsville Eden area is in an elevated fire risk zone. And given that in those zones, we have a kind of a elevated safety settings. If we have a, if we have a line that trips, typically if it tripped, we would just re-close it. If it holds, we just, you know, power will be returned uh, in those EFR settings. And that happens on kind of starting the shoulder months into summer and, you know, into early fall. Uh, when there, there are higher burn uh, type risk. And so in those, that timing in those areas, if we have something that trips, we will not re-energize it. Until it's physically inspected by alignment for the entire circuit. What that means is you have longer outages. And it has to happen, those inspections have to happen during daylight hours. So if we have a, a something that trips in Eden at ten o'clock at night, it could be well into the morning before we get their power restored. The reasoning behind that is, is we don't want to be uh, an ignition source for a wildfire, so it's a safety type progression. Um, the public uh, safety power shut off is the next uh, next tool we have in our tool shed for uh, public safety. Uh, that's, we've got six uh, meteorologists on staff at Pacific Corp. Uh, which is the parent company for PAC Power and Rocky Mount Power. Uh, they will look at weather patterns, winds, heat, humidity. And in certain circumstances, last year Cedar City was showing high winds, very dry conditions, a lot of fuel. So we were instituting this public safety. There's notice on that. We'll give you a twenty-four hour notice, twelve hour notice. We kind of go through the, you know, a, a public kind of uh, process. We'll set up a community command centers, people can come get ice, uh, water, uh, different necessities or charge their phones. And uh, in those instances, we will shut down power preemptively to prevent. Uh, lines from uh, coming down and causing damage and or wildfire type situations. We will also put more assets in the area. So we had extra regional business managers down there help managing the situation as well as additional crews throughout the state. Came and so that we could get things after those events. Uh, those aren't, aren't common, but if we are seeing something that can be problematic for our community. We'll, we'll, we'll communicate that and give you guys the information. So that's the, the second prong, and that started uh, last year as well, um, I think two years ago. The new one is our de-energization um, process. What that is, is if we have a fire that's close to uh, power equipment. We will, we will shut off the power equipment prior to the fire getting clo- getting close to that equipment. Uh, what that is, is uh, in Oregon, we had a, we, we had an instance where we had a fire wildfire. Went through active equipment uh, that was energized. And then that lawsuit, they stated that we were contributor to that wildfire. And so we're currently uh, have, I think about thirty billion in, in liabilities uh, through that uh, process right now. And so in order to uh, protect the, protect the community, that we're not going to be ignition source as well as uh, limit liability. Uh, because we're, we're, we've got ten billion in equity, so if we've got thirty billion in losses, you can kind of see where that's going. Uh, we will, uh, we will uh, turn off the power immediately. Uh, we will uh, monitor the situation and then re-energize as soon as it's uh, deemed safe. Uh, we did have that happen on Twenty First Street. Uh, kind of that enchantment, there was a wildfire. I was getting close to some transmission ass- assets and so some large industrial customers as well as a. Lot of community in Ogden, uh, did, were, were uh, were de-energized in protection from that wildfire or grass fire. Um, when they first initially told us about that, I thought that'd be more of a rule type uh, situation. Uh, we've had that happen. Davis kind of got hit with eighteen thousand customers over the weekend. Uh, we got hit with seven thousand customers. Um, and so, yeah, it's uh, it's definitely something that's going to affect everyone. I kind of liken it to kind of going through TSA after nine eleven. It's. We're, we're, we're going to take a little more pain for uh, ensuring that we're, we're, we're providing power in a safe manner.
Okay, that's good. Questions, commissioners, any other questions? You've done yours, sir, you've been great, Erko. I really appreciate you being there. You've always been really responsive to us and appreciate that. I have one more call I'd like you to make regarding our Children's Justice Center.
Okay.
If you wouldn't mind, but okay, which if you just let him know that I asked you to give him a call.
Okay, yeah, be happy to.
Question for you about your EV stations.
Yeah.
Um, so we received a federal uh, appropriation. And we're going to be installing some EV stations here at the Weaver Center.
Yeah.
Um, do you guys, uh, you like discounting, like what, how do you support EV stations for public entities? That's what I want to ask.
We have uh, two, we have uh, two kind of programs, uh, we have a rebate.
Okay.
You can get rebates on the chargers themselves. Uh, which typically, uh, given kind of your, I'm guessing your situation that you're, is, you're going to be installing them in existing infrastructures, is that correct? We. Well. Existing from our power source here. Right, and, and in, in, in buildings it exists.
Yes, correct.
And so typically the, the largest expense is actually getting, getting the conduit and the, everything set up to the chargers.
Okay.
So we have a make ready program, but you can uh, you can, you can reach out to, to me directly and I can kind of get you.
Okay.
There's an application and we can fund up to a large portion or all of the getting it ready to that charger.
Ooh, that would be great.
As an incentive, and so there's limited dollars on that, but uh, I believe we still have funding. And so you can kind of reach out and they'll reimburse you for the infrastructure costs all the way up to the chargers. And then you guys would uh, pay for the chargers yourself, but that's, that's the big expense. There you.
Okay, perfect. That gives you more money toward your uh, electric vehicle.
Yeah, no, and definitely, we are in, we're a big support.
We're getting shot an electric vehicle and we're going to try to put in two EV stations out here behind the building. So we can start transitioning.
Start modeling.
Modeling, there you go.
Different behavior. We just did, we just did a ribbon cutting for Ogden City, uh, they put in chargers for the municipal center. They use our make, make ready.
Okay, well, they also use the same federal funding too, so it looks like it works together. So I'll, I'll reach out to you, Kirk. I'd love to talk about that.
Perfect.
Great. Is there anything else for Mr. Nygro? Saying none, Kirk, thank you for joining us today. We appreciate you.
You done. I'll update this and send you guys a copy. Thank you. Appreciate all you guys doing.
We're now going to go back and continue item number. Five, uh, if you could bring those players into the room, that'd be great. We're already behind, uh.
Hey, how's it going?
Well, we missed you or how did that, uh, just a slight? But I left my lunch at the restaurant and ran, I sorry. Anything for you guys?
Well, sometimes, you know, when you order that liver and onion by mistake.
Yeah.
Squeeze to get away from right now.
Yeah, it wasn't that good. Okay. We were in the process of discussing, I'm going to actually uh, uh, have you jump right into it, David, if you would.
Do that.
What's going on here and, and in the, in the interest of time and also efficiency. But we did talk about the problem that Tammy, I think articulated pretty well, what the problem was with regards to. How this is going up, especially in the valley. So go ahead if you would, please.
Okay, so is there a way to pull up a map or?
Sure.
We can probably envision it as we go, that we get there. So, just uh. When homes are built, subdivisions are built, water supply is a standard uh, issue, just like you've got to have septic or sewer. So you're supposed to have water in the same vein as that. You can't build a home without sewer or septic, correct? You've got to have water. A lot of these people are building wells. The problem is, there's no way to fight a fire with well water. So. We've been letting onesie twosie homes go in. And we've been dealing with them one at a time, and sometimes it's a suppression system. Sometimes a home's small enough, we can bring a water tender and bring our own water supply. And we've tried to accommodate some of the people. The problem is homes aren't getting any smaller. And now we're starting to get these onesie twosies are becoming tensy twentiesies. And we don't have hydrants, and so we have an example of that going in right now. So to review really quickly for our attorneys, the fire code is the absolute minimum standard. You go to a county, they don't even have real commissioners, they don't have anybody, they don't have no attorney, you know, someone tells the bar.
I want to get that on the recording.
So.
Leaving Pollock, this is for you.
Go ahead, so. But, and, and so if they, if there's no, if there's no city or county rules, we can, we can fall to the fire code. And that sets a minimum code. So normally, like on access, you can only have thirty homes on a single access before all of them are required to be sprinkled. Well, the city or county might say, you know what, we want a second access just to move people. Because we don't want a hundred homes on a single access, that's just not reasonable. And so the county would come in and say, no, our, our threshold is fifty and more. You're going to have a second a- access regardless, just to move people. And so we fall back to the fire code if there's no rules, but that's kind of how that works with the hydrants. We have areas where, you know, and some people complain about certain developer up in the valley, but I'm telling you, every time I work with him. He puts in, he puts in the roads that we want hydrants and he does it the right way. And then some of these other people that are building this one subdivision out here, thank you for pulling that up, whoever got it. They're building this subdivision, and I'm not saying they complain about him, but I'm telling you, there've been other people wanting to do building up there that complain about him. And yet they're the ones that don't want to put in the hydrants. So we got, we got a potential for twenty lots. And no hydrants. The other concern. You're talking just uh, north of. Casey Acres?
Yep.
This is Casey. Right there. So you're talking this? Yes, sir. Yeah, this is one example, that's correct.
Okay.
They keep, yeah, you can build twenty homes one at a time, right? But I mean, we know that they're going to put in twenty homes. So when I did my review, I said, tell me what your plan is for fire protection. That's what I told the other guy and John, and John said, I'm going to put in a water tank, how much water do you need? And he goes, I'll have hydrants and I'll do it, and he did it. These guys are like, well, what are you talking about? We can't afford to put in a water system. But, but if you go look at any subdivision, go out to Harrisville, that new one off the highway, go out west to some of our subdivisions that we're doing. It's not even a question, there's hydrants everywhere, everywhere they're supposed to be. And yet we have places up here where they're like, well, we just can't do it. We can't put them in. Well, no, you, you can, you just don't want to.
Correct.
And then they say, well, I had one guy, you'll appreciate this. I had one guy throw it back at me that, well, we're trying to do affordable housing. And I'm like, there's no such thing as that in the valley.
That's not affordable.
No, no, it's not.
You seen his barn?
Yes, yeah, so uh, anyway. Yes, we can lean on the fire code and yes, I'll be the bad guy. That's not the problem. The pro- what I would like is, is for us to stand united and say, yes, this is our, this is our policy. This is a life safety issue and we need water. And we make other people, we're not going to pick and choose who does it. We're going to say across the board, you put in more than two homes, you're putting in a water system. Because if it, then if Charlie or, or Tammy, these, Charlie, I guess is a long-term planner. He gets a subdivision in, even if I don't see it, Charlie knows, well, you're going to have to have hydrants. So that we're all on the same page, and then they go to Tammy, Tammy says, yep, you got to have hydrants. We can refer back to the code, that's not the problem, it's just, I don't want them to get so far down, they got it subdivided, they've sold lots. They're ready to build, and then I say, well, where are your hydrants? They're ready to build. And then I say, well, where are your hydrants? And then they say, well, where do I send the lawsuit? Because you guys have let me get this far. And now all of a sudden, the fire official says we need hydrant. So part of this is, I wanna protect the county.
Yeah.
I don't want my friends getting lawsuits.
That's a good point to make.
Do you have a proposal for, you you mentioned um any more than two? Homes. So if 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 a subdivision has two homes, then the next subdivision of the same land, the same property, they subdivide two more. Is that when that would trigger?
So, yeah, that's a, that's a tough one because you're right. So sometimes what happens is, there's only room for one or two. And then we make other arrangements. I don't like it, but that would be unreasonable to put in a water system. But if they do one or two and there's a bigger parcel where you know they're gonna make it bigger. We start right with the first one because the potential for twenty homes is there. We gotta start putting in a water system.
So if there's a potential for more. That's when it would trigger. If it's only potential for two, then.
Then then so that direction I got from there, this is where I got that, just so you know. So the state fire marshal happened to be the Weaver County Fire Marshal years ago.
Yep.
Yes. I affectionately call him Theodore. I called him and I said, I need some guidance on this, or I want your, I want some thoughts. He's not gonna tell me what to do, but I want your thoughts. And I I like to to try to get as much information as I can so that I can come to you with solutions to some of the problems that I come to you with. He said, whenever you have homes in the upper valley where you have more than one or two, so I took it as two, he goes, make them put in water. And I said, okay. And it's just been. It's a challenge, because the other aspect is, we don't wanna stop growth. That's, I don't feel like that's my place to stop growth. I just wanna try to do what I need to do to make it safe. But the problem is, I'm getting walked on because these developers. Are knowing, hey, we can just do one at a time and then we'll never have to put in a water system. So. I had a cute little video I was gonna bring you and show you, but uh Tammy got to see it. And the guy goes in there and the wa- and the fire hydrant's broken. And it it's a guy doing a spoof on one of these Chicago nine one one things, or what, I don't watch that. So so he goes in there and he goes. The hydrant's broken. It's the only one in the subdivision. And he pauses the video and he goes, one hydrant in a subdivision? Oh, someone's getting fired. Meaning that the fire marshal only required once, he's gonna get fired, right? But it was funny, but yeah, we would've showed it to you. So anyway, I don't know if you. Have some thoughts? To help with? Some of these ideas or?
Mister Chair, I don't know if I have some thoughts to help with this idea either. Uh I'm glad to see two dots in case the acres, two red dots in case the acres.
And so, well, okay, so that's, that's another thing though, so. Years ago. I wanna say that there weren't as good of rules as there are now. So they put in a twenty-four thousand gallon tank and a couple hydrants. And that's sure better than nothing. We'll take it, right? But it's about a tenth of what's required by code.
Two hundred and fifty thousand?
Mm-hmm. Two hundred and forty, yes, correct. And so, and they've got a pump. So if we wanna use that hydrant. We have to go into the pump house, get into the pump house, remember how to turn the pump on, turn the pump on, and then the pump house will pump water to the hydrants. And then we have a little bit.
Twenty, I think it was actually.
It was a while ago. You're right.
It was my subdivision, so you can.
No, and and no, but 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 I told you though, at least they gave us that, right?
Oh, yeah, I guess you paid for it, yeah.
Yeah, no. And so, I mean, that's way better. So actually, I tried and see if these guys run the water out to there and then give them some additional water storage. And they said, no, we can't do that. Now, I don't know if we can't do that or we don't want to. Because if I said, well, you can't do it unless you do it, I bet they'd figure it out. But. Again. I gotta be careful. I wanna solve the problem. I wanna make people safer. I do I do not wanna practice unrighteous dominion.
Well, go ahead. All right.
Number one, I support where you're at. I think. From a developer standpoint, I know both sides of the story. I think you've gotta. Make sure it's done on the front side because everybody's gonna try to postpone it. And then it's gonna come into a lawsuit. Well, you let these people do it, why don't, you know, you gotta let us do it or we're gonna sue you. That's what I try to avoid as much as possible. Um with, two's the number. I mean, I'm I'm gonna look at your rec. Unless court has come up with something, a state code in our break, I. I think it's the fire, fire district, you guys make the decision. That's how I see it.
Yeah, the only code I saw in the Cludma section was that it says. Counties are encouraged. It was interesting that he uses the word encouraged.
It's a bad legislative word.
Yeah, to receive a recommendation from the fire authority before approving a plat.
He used to say required in the state legislature, changed it to, just struck it out and put encouragement next to it. That's why.
Okay.
Really?
So we adopted that requirement in our county code. I guess, you know, probably either when it was required or when it was encouraged, we decided, yes, we will do that. And so we do. Require a letter, like I mentioned earlier, from. Or, you know, some, yeah, a letter from the Weber Fire Department approving the fire protection method before the county will approve the final plat. So.
Um I support where you're at. We know, I had the discussion with summer. That we know that the typical well in Ogden Valley on a single-family home is, you know, you might as well go out and spit on the fire. And you'll be about as more effective. See, you've got it, you've gotta have a system in place that we think will work. And again, it comes down to, you know, protecting us. But we have a fire up there. I know, I know several subdivisions that one home. Takes, you know, takes a fire. You're gonna probably burn down one or two others. And now we're the bad guys in the fire. Why didn't you make us?
Right.
Why didn't you make us do that? So.
So there's another example. Really quick, I wanna show you, and then I've got one last thought to share with you and I'll be done.
Okay.
So up by Snow Basin, up off Old Snow Basin Road.
Yeah.
Keep that map up like it is so it shows the dots. So you go right up there.
Yep.
Thank you, Sean.
Right here.
Yep, right in there, zoom in there. So you remember a couple of years ago, the kid went out there and he shot the gun into the hill and started the hill on fire. Do you remember that? They what?
We had a fire there.
Yeah, we had a fire there. They went right up to those homes.
Yeah.
And again, it's a substandard tank. However, we're grateful we had it and we're grateful we had that water. And our guys hooked up to it and they went a hose to a house that protected that house from that fire and they saved all those homes.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have been able to if they wouldn't have had those hydrants. And so that's another just FYI example. And we got, you know, they gave, they invited us to a barbecue and they were happy and that's great, but it would've been just the opposite. If their homes would've burned down, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but luckily we saved them. So. The last thought is, and this is one that uh I would've been more prepared for for this meeting, and so I'm just gonna give it as a as a thought for now that maybe to reapproach. If we have an area that's just not gonna work for water and we get the onesie twosies that don't look like they're gonna blow up into a subdivision. Then I think that we look at seeing if we can do a thirteen R system versus a thirteen D. Right now, what we require is a thirteen D is a home sprinklers, but it's just inside the home as a life safety. To get them out of the home. And that's, you know, by far the most important thing.
Right.
The thirteen R doesn't cost a whole lot more, but it adds a few heads. And you think about all the fires that we've had, if you pay attention, a lot of them are in the garage and on balconies, you know, barbecuers or uh stuff. The thirteen R adds the heads into the garage and onto the balcony. And so that helps us protect. The uh structure as well. Because you remember the guy up at Nordic, they had the fire. I'm just coming off, talking my head on these things, but the guy on Nordic had the fire, had the really bad snow. We couldn't get to it.
Yeah.
His house burned. We finally got to it, saved part of the house. If he would've had a thirteen R system, that head would've put the fire out and he would've never heard about it. When mayor was mayor at West Haven. They had a a fire in uh Leighton that burned a complex to the ground. They had a fire somewhere in Salt Lake that burned a complex to the ground. Did you hear about the fire in West Haven? You didn't. Do you know why? The sprinkler head on the balcony put the fire out before it did anything. Well, there was a little bit of damage on, and and these are apartments. So just a little bit of damage in the apartments, yeah.
Hmm.
And so they work.
I think.
And so if we.
I think I could get on board with your thirteen R.
Yeah.
Again, you guys.
I've gotta do some research to make sure that we can do it.
You're the authority. Let's uh, you you're good with that, Commissioner Bollos? Any que- comments or question there?
Nope.
Okay, and you.
I'm Commissioner Faur.
Good. I I can trust you guys. It's your job and. You know, Ted's a good resource.
He is. He really is.
Theodore, as you refer to him. Yeah, so, no, I'm good.
He is a good resource.
If the numbers, if the numbers too, my opinion is, is we we support that, Charlie, so.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's the main thing you're looking for, Dave, is somebody comes in here, which they will, and they'll complain.
They'll complain.
They'll complain to planning that we're being the tough guys.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not gonna toss you guys under the bus. At least that's my. Or we could go with a two hundred and forty thousand gallon tank, which I would.
Correct, correct.
And that's what I. You got two options, yeah. So.
Yeah.
It's gonna cut us down quite a bit, but that's how it's. Yeah, and now we've also gotta put a grandfather. If they're so far along in the process, we've all gotta agree, if they've gone this far, but if they're brand new or something. You know, uh. That's where we are. You okay with that?
And I think.
Come up with a solution so we can put that down.
We agreed on that one subdivision, that first one we looked at, right? That we were gonna grandfather that because of that situation where we allowed them to go so far. How do I all of a sudden say, now you need hydrants?
But for new applications beginning X a day, we probably ought to do that, so.
And is there more potential for additional homes in that?
Well, I didn't know that, and I hate saying it like that because I'm not trying to, but. When uh Tammy and Charlie looked at it, they're like, there's potential for twenty homes in here. And I'm like, oh my gosh, twenty homes and no water. That's terrible.
And we also write into there that if they, when they do that next phase, they gotta make that.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's what I see. Cause we've got it, if that's the issue, there's gotta be something in the development agreement or. That no other homes, no other permits could go ahead until you have what, you've allowed those two, but anything else has gotta be suppressed. You have to have a system.
You have to have a system.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much again, folks. We appreciate you coming in. We're gonna continue with our day.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thanks, Dave.
Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you.
Yeah.
Commissioners, we'll move to item number seven, if you would.
Good to see you. Overall, you did a wonderful.
Did you get renamed there?
No. Mayor was mayor, when mayor was.
Mayor was mayor.
When mayor is mayor.
Yeah.
This sheriff, this sheriff called me mayor for like six months.
Marty, Cassie, welcome. We're glad to have you here. So sorry to keep you waiting. Commissioners, we're on item number seven. This is a discussion regarding the Trolley Parks and Recreation Standard Contract. We have Ms. Cassie Bybee. Uh Liam is here over here to the the right, and leading the discussion today will be uh Marty Smith. Mr. Smith, go ahead, please.
Um. I think we can be quick. Uh before you, you have an ordinance. Uh which is the approval of standard form contracts. We use this ordinance for a few contracts already within our department. They're the small sort of small dollar amount. Often used for like coaches at the ice sheet or whatever, uh those kind of things. Um. That I can just sign, that it does not have to come before the commission is really with the ordinance, and Liam's there, he can actually. Get into the legal of it, but basically I can, I have the authority to sign those so that we're not bringing all of those to you. We're asking to change the ordinance to add. The theater and theater production contracts in as well. Because you'll you'll see, for example.
A hundred.
You'll see like fifty come through, right?
Yeah.
And they're two, four hundred dollar for an actor for four hundred dollars or whatever. And so.
Yeah.
It it's it's forty-five signatures for me or approvals and it goes to for her and the attorney and the clerk and so.
Load them all for commission.
Um Liam, is that the gist of what we're asking? Change the ordinance first?
Yeah, we'll have to update the ordinance because currently the ordinance doesn't allow for these production theater contracts to be approved through the standard form agreement. So if you're okay with amending the ordinance, allowing them to have that authority, then my office will create the standard form contract. They won't be able to change. It'll be a standard form contract, unadmissible. And they will just have the ability to sign it at their department level.
And to clarify, Liam, that would just be a few blanks in there, like the name of the person, the dollar amount and. I mean, they're really, it's it's just like sound person or actor or or whatever, and we could define that, so. I'm already, I'm already signing ones for coaches at the ice sheet, you know, simple.
Well, coaches aren't, you know, as important as an actor.
But they sometimes they have a lot more drama, so.
Well, yeah.
So do you have any?
I don't have any concerns.
Well, I might have an issue with that. I kinda enjoy reading through those fifty minutes. Give me a break.
Well, in all honesty, I said to him, I says, well, uh uh maybe like Mari's or like one-offs, like Dawn Troop was just here from Philadelphia. She's been here.
Large, with a larger scale.
A larger scale, maybe, maybe, you know.
If you don't feel comfortable with it, then send it on.
You know, the director or something, some of these larger ones, because there are some that you're paying at thirty-five hundred or four thousand. So you might, you might bring those in, but all these little ones that just keep adding up, I'm like, maybe we can just streamline them.
You're the best in the land at this. You gotta, you're good to go.
I just, okay, I just have guilt when I click through forty-five, Liam's gotta click through forty-five, and then you've gotta sign forty-five, and it's just like a lot of them, so.
It's a lot of forty-five.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Told you we'd be quick. Uh so this would involve an ordinance change, and then I don't know if you wanna see the contract when we're done with it?
Bring it.
Bring it and show it to you?
Yeah, that's no, this is just a show. Well, I I've seen enough of these over the last thirty years. I think you feel, trust me to like the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
You're happier than I'm happy.
Thank you, Commissioners. And Aida, we're moving in the set tomorrow.
You just cut ten minutes out of.
Congratulations.
Oh, my gosh.
When's the new freezer gonna be installed?
Uh that kitchen starts today too. Yeah.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, super. Commissioners, we're now gonna move to item number eight on our agenda. We'll change out the room right now. I need two seconds to uh.
I gotta hit the ham.
Are you changing out the room too?
Yeah, I will. I gotta change out something. It's gonna be my. We're on to item number uh eight on our agenda today. I'll entertain a motion to move to close. Close session to discuss the character and competence of an individual. Can I get a motion to do that, please?
Second.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Bollos. Commissioner Faur.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We'll now go to closed session. Thank you so much. I'll turn on the recorder that's in the room right now, so Christie.
Could you come in here for just a quick second, Christie Bingham, thank you.
Portland should be coming in, too, so.
Okay, I'm good, Christie.
Hey, buddy. Yeah, I just, I'm out of sauce here, I need. Christie, battery's low, I can't record again.
Okay. That's just fine, I'm.
So, hey, so Gage, should I cancel that idea?
Well, that's, that's just my suggestion, I, I mean, you're.
Yeah, can I cancel it like tomorrow morning, or should I just do it right now?
I'd do, oh, sorry, you asked, Gage.
Well, I would, sooner the better, in my opinion.
I'm on a roll.
You have no opinion, Chris?
Yeah.
Facing it on the fact that it's the day before.
Yeah, I would just say, based upon the email that you previously sent, it's bumps up against a holiday, we, we think it'd be better to.
Portland time to reschedule. How do you?
You can't, you don't.
We can't say you're like insurance.
It's too much risk.
Well, let's do this, let's move on, Commissioners, to our ninth item on our agenda today, which is a discussion on implementing background checks at Weber County. Uh, we have, again. Mr. Ambassador Scott Park. And Emily Wilde will lead us in that discussion.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners, so, um, up until this point. Background checks have all been done based on the department, so the departments have been in charge of doing their own background checks.
Sure.
Um, and I would like to change that and have a countywide policy for background checks that's ran through the HR office. For all departments minus the sheriff's office, and then the county attorney's office, um, and. Exclude those departments because they have to do more intense background checks, because they're for more than just employment reasons. Um, we do have a couple departments that are currently doing them, like our library, um, our health department, um, our CJC. And so, it would be working with those departments to then kind of hopefully transfer it over to the HR department. But, you know, again, I don't wanna step on anybody's toes if they feel like they specifically need to do it. Um. Portland and I have talked to a couple agencies, specifically, we talked to, uh, BCI. So in order for us to utilize BCI to do criminal background checks, there are a couple things that we need to do. So first of all, we have to, um, have you guys pass an ordinance that identifies the categories of positions that would be subject to background checks. So we would not do it on every position, um, it would be positions that say work with children or, uh, vulnerable adults or have.
Money.
Money, or, um, you know, maybe access to the different facilities, you know, if they're given keys to like the.
Janitorial.
Stuff like that, those types of positions, um, and, and that's kind of under state code, kind of lists a few. Position or types of areas that, um, we would include in that. So after we get an ordinance passed, there is an application that we have to then, um, submit to be a qualified entity. In order to go into BCI and get the criminal background checks. Um, it's, it's pretty important, and they do audits every three years, um, and this is why we recommend having it go through the HR office instead of the. Um, and this is why we recommend having it go through the HR office instead of the individual departments because you see a lot of confidential information and there is a training um, that, that we would have to go through annually. So whoever gets into that system has to go through an annual training to verify that they understand what all of that information is, that they know how to secure the information, that they're not giving out the information. Um, otherwise you could be, you know, or we could be subject to, um, I don't know, you know, criminal. I don't even know the word I'm looking for, but.
Would be in trouble.
Yeah, we'd be in trouble, right? If, if, so that, that's why I'm recommending it go through HR. So HR kind of becomes the, the user, the houser, I mean, we already have set up in our office to keep things confidential. Um, so that, that is the kind of the avenue that we were looking at. Now, the, these would be name-based search in Utah only or fingerprint and name, that would be Utah and Northwestern states. So going through BCI does not do a national search. If we wanted to do a national search, we would have to go through a third-party vendor instead of using BCI. So.
Cost of.
Um, it kind of depends. So to do BCI is obviously going to be the cheapest route. Um, there's a, it's a fifteen dollar fee if you do name search. If you do fingerprints, it's, it's, you know, fifteen dollars plus the cost of the fingerprints. Um, so you're looking at closer to probably thirty, thirty-five dollars a check. And you would, we would have to submit to BCI all of the positions within the county that we plan on doing background checks. And then, you know, the departments would have to identify, do they want a name-based search? Do they want a fingerprint-based search? So, so maybe those areas in like our rec department who are working with our children or the library that's working with, you know, their programs with the children, you would want to do a fingerprint-based search. Um, because they're working with individuals that's vulnerable, you know, that are vulnerable. Um, if we go through a third party, I reached out to Davis County, they use a third party instead of going through BCI. Um, and their third, their third party charges about thirty-five dollars. Um, so I haven't gone through a whole vetting process with third parties. It, it, it just depends on, do we want to go with BCI and go through the training and the audit? Or, you know, vet out third parties.
How many people do we hire a year excluding the sheriff and the attorney?
Oh, quite a few. I don't know the number off the top of my head.
Talking a hundred people, so it's thirty-five hundred dollars? Or it's a seven thousand dollars ongoing, we could probably find that or figure that out, right?
And that'll be scattered amongst all the different funds, so the general fund will be probably a third of it.
Yeah, I mean.
I just didn't want to, I want to make sure it wasn't a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, no.
No, it wouldn't be that much. I mean, there would be some volunteers that would have to be included in that. Um, you know, if, if you've got volunteers at our health department, for example, or our library, I mean, they just sent us a hundred and fifty volunteer applications to work with their children's reading programs. And all of those volunteers would be included in that. So, um, you've got, you've got a cost associated with that. Um, my one other concern is bringing this on through the HR department is, you know, going to be like an added task that I don't know that I have the full staff to do that, but you know, we'll have to see how that goes. Um, but you know, to do background checks, I mean, just for the library volunteers and is a lot, but.
But they're doing it now currently, right?
So, to my knowledge, they are, they are doing it, Kimberly over at the library is doing it. So if we're looking at, you know, staff hours for my staff, you know, and, and do we want to like let the library, for example, run their own? But that means that they would still have to, um, meet the requirements of our policy. They would still have to go through the training that's required. They would, you know, they would still have to meet those requirements if they want their own staff to do it.
If they go through BCI.
If they go through BCI.
Not necessarily with a third party.
Not necessarily with the third party. If we do a third party, it, it actually is a lot easier. You don't have an audit. Um, we don't have to send them a listing of all of the positions. We can just determine ourselves what positions and all offers if those positions are contingent on passing a background check. And we run that as part of the onboarding process.
Um, that to me sounds like the easiest, because if we could say, okay, library, you keep doing your sheriff, you do your CDC, you do yours. Anyone who's not already doing it, then that's going to go to HR, that's not as big of a burden to your office. All you need to do then is on your onboarding is make sure that it was either done by your office or somebody else for just those key positions that you defined.
Right.
And then the cost is going to be insignificant. I don't even think we need to budget for it, I think we would just.
I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, third party.
If we did the third party, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to look at the cost when we actually vet out and get three, you know, I would get three different vendors, but you know.
It doesn't sound like it's that big of a difference in cost.
Not, not if we use somebody like, you know, who Davis County uses. Now, I have used companies in the past, you know, outside of working for a county that they charged upwards of, you know, a hundred dollars, a, a check. It just kind of depends on the type of check you're doing, how far back you're doing. If you're checking addresses for the last ten years versus five years. So, but I think we can keep it, you know, affordable and find some vendors that are affordable.
You get all those volunteers, we're probably talking thirty-five or forty thousand dollars a year now.
If you do the, some of those volunteers for the library, yes.
Think we do a thousand background checks, I guess a hundred and fifty, but they're already paying for them now, right?
I believe the library is paying for them now.
Yeah. So you're already paying. They're already paying, so it's only, the only additional cost is the new people we're going to do, because we're already paying for.
We're not going to have a thousand new people.
No, we wouldn't have a thousand new people, like the health department.
We wouldn't go back retro, it'd be all the new ones, yeah.
Yeah, so we're probably thinking maybe, I would say less than a hundred new positions would go through.
Less volunteers than a hundred and fifty.
Well, but they're already being done by the library, right?
Yeah, so they're, so that's already in their budget because they, they are already doing that.
Okay.
So.
I thank you for straightening me out.
So another thirty-five or another four or five thousand dollars is all we're talking about.
I think you're talking under five grand.
Yeah, probably.
Right, for, for those positions, you know, like the court partners office or, you know, culture parks and rec, I know they want to do some, you know.
Okay. Okay. I think you have a consensus, let's move forward with that second party, third party.
Okay.
Should we go to a third party?
Maybe a fourth party.
So I, I will vet out and, and three vendors and find three vendors instead of going through BCI.
I think that makes sense.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Assuming they provide the information we want, because some of them might get it from different sources, and like you were saying, different levels of search, so we would want to compare what they provide.
Right, yeah, yeah.
What do we get for our money?
Right, yep, and then we can make a decision from there in which vendor we want to use and.
In August, if you'll make that a part of the managers with the first Tuesday of the month, because we're not going to have the one tomorrow.
Yes.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You're back ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
I'm proud of you. No, we are.
Oh, really?
Twelve minutes ahead.
Well, then I'll entertain a motion to Sauter for twelve minutes.
Oh, yeah, twelve minutes, exactly.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye, aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Cornet, I just want you to hear the proficiency of how legal we operate.
And the video, please.
There you go.
Thank you. All right. Welcome back to our commission. Commissioners work session on this Monday, the first of July will now move to item number ten on our. Our public meeting, which is the discussion regarding the Riverdale RDA. We here are here with Stephanie Russell, Stephanie Ebert, Scott Park. We have our friends here from Riverdale. Uh, let's go around the room. Uh, we'll start with you, Mr. Cooper. Brandon Cooper.
Yes, sir. My name is Brandon Cooper, Community Development Director for Riverdale City.
Steve Brooks. The you threw me off there a little bit. Riverdale City Administrator and City Attorney as well.
Michelle Marigoni.
Yeah.
City reporter.
Thank you, Michelle.
I'm Stephanie Ebert.
Oh.
I'm working.
Already did, sorry.
Yeah, I already forgot.
Sorry, never mind. Welcome. Thank you. That's kind of funny. I'm glad you work here. Okay. Mr. Cooper, why don't you go ahead?
I'll I'll lead off.
Oh.
You you does that surprise you there?
No.
All right. Well, well, first of all, I'd like to just say thanks for you guys to give us more time. I know we've been in there a number of times over the last year. And and Brandon's been meeting with some of your staff people, but we we this has progressed further than when we were in here the last time. And so we wanted to give you a little bit of an update on that. That one of the reasons why we feel this is so important is because this is a countywide thing. I mean, yeah, benefits Riverdale. There's no question about it. But like even as early as this fall. We came in before. One of the things that we were we were lobbying at that point, the state. Were those bridge replacements going over I fifteen and under eighty-four coming up forty-four hundred. That that's crucial because as as we've looked at this project and the impact that's going to have on Riverdale Road. Um, their estimating of Riverdale Road will be maxed out in about two years. And if that's the case, uh, the whole county is affected by that because that's the main east-west corridor for Southern Weaver County. And so that pushes a lot of that traffic out in forty-four hundred. And uh, by widening and lengthening those bridges there, that's going to offer a lot more traffic than what's going to be able to pass there now. So that benefits Roy, benefits everybody in the west and it benefits Ogden when they expand their their airport, stuff like that. All that's going to be crucial. So as part of our negotiations with the state, we we can't afford that. It's Riverdale City. I mean, we really are on a budget when it comes to those things. I know you you laugh about that a little bit, but there's some truth to that. Um, when that started out, I mean, we're talking millions and millions of dollars was that initial bid, and we've gotten that down to just a little under two. And America First is actually picking up the tab on that. So. It's not going to impact the taxpayers at all, but it's going to benefit us all as Weaver County. So I wanted to point that out just because we will see the benefits of this whole project starting this fall when those bridges go in.
That UDOT has approved and there's they've already in their construction timeline for this fall, later this fall, I believe.
It's going, yeah.
October, was it October? They're going to start.
They want to start then. What what initially had happened is they had some federal funds that they were going to use to replace those bridges, but they weren't going to increase them. So our lobbying efforts went in and said, we need to increase though. They've got to be bigger and longer and and even better. And and.
So you could get more than just that narrowing of the.
Right.
I I just want to make sure that.
It's going to double that size of that one.
So you'll have two lanes going each way. Well, then you've got that roundabout though.
The roundabout will be coming out and we'll be putting lights in there mainly because of their.
Is that the one between the two freeways or the?
Uh, both of those uh, roundabouts. Well, the Roy one won't, but the roundabout roundabout that's down lower will come out.
But the one in what about the one that goes in Riverdale in front of the rec center? That gun is out?
I've got.
Yeah.
That shows.
Okay, yeah, we'll we'll cover all that. But uh, the idea was is what their traffic engineers are telling us that we can flow a lot more traffic quicker and better if we go to lights rather than the roundabouts. So. Um, that'll all come into play as part of this expansion as this goes forth. But. And if and if you're not aware of that, the one side of that uh, bridge is actually on county property. That's unincorporated Weaver County.
For now.
It's not. Yeah, Jim and I fight over this all the time, especially when he needs a road passed or plowed or something like that. But. No, yeah, he knows that's coming this way. You know what? In fairness, I mean, in fairness, I don't see us objecting to that. I mean, that that right now, we we give you a hard time about that, but in reality, at some point in time, I think we're going to have to take that over just because it makes no sense for you guys to go up there and have to take care of that. But. Um, you know, with these big bridges being replaced, hopefully we'll we won't run into a lot of the repairs and stuff we've had to do on that because they were getting old. And they're wearing out and stuff, but it'll be nice when it's done. But uh. Anyway, I don't want to take too much time in regards to that because Brandon's got a little presentation here that he wanted to present to you. We've been in, I don't know how many hours of meetings on this thing, and we're getting to the point where it's time to start pushing this forward. So. Um, having said that, I'll I'll defer to Mr. Cooper to give you a presentation and see where we get with this. So, but again, thanks for your time and and your work.
Very good. So I want I just need to be full disclosure here. Some of the best. Practical joke stories of my life occur with this man right here. So we've got a lot of history. We remain. Both friends for unfortunately fifty years.
I don't know how we do it, but we do it.
So great.
Well, thanks, Steve. Um, and thanks everyone. So as Steve mentioned, this has been around a while. There's been a lot of iterations, a lot of discussions. So I'll just take a few minutes and give some context first, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
Yourself.
You don't feel like it? That's okay. This should be done in a little bit and they'll probably go off and do their thing. And oh, hang on. Yes, sorry.
Yeah. Could you mute yourself, please?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, that's embarrassing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So as Steve said, this this is the West Bench RDA. Um, and this map just illustrates kind of its location. So it's centrally located. Uh, between, and I don't know how to move this. Can we move this?
Is this existing?
Yeah, you should be able to drag it.
Drag it.
Make it go away.
Okay, that's probably good. Um, yeah, so so this is the existing area as it is currently configured. So this is an an active existing RDA that we're talking about.
When did it trigger?
Two thousand and uh, two thousand twenty-five is when we triggered it. It was established in two thousand and five.
It's not.
Two thousand twenty-five.
It's not triggered yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it'll get it'll trigger this year.
Okay, so I'll I'll explain all that on the next slide. I just wanted to kind of give some context of its relationship in the county to major assets like the Ogden Airport and the Hill Air Force Base expansion. And how it really is some prime land right there in between the two freeways. Um, this is how it's looked for a long time. Um, you'll notice the America First. Uh, existing campus, all of these buildings, um, they've been occupying for a long, long time. And then this, some of you know, this is an orchard. It's been vacant for for quite a while. Um, this is has been part of that orchard. It's now under development. And then this is the Motel Six. These are two office buildings that have been there for about, I would say, twelve years, ten years. Um, and then the new Maverick is is down here at the bottom.
Hold that. Just put.
You can pull it up.
Pull it. Just grab it and pull it.
Well.
There it is. Uh, maybe slide it over to the right top corner and that won't be up here again, shouldn't.
Okay. I made it worse.
Okay, we'll just sorry.
Okay. So, um. That that blue uh, section on the big map is this is this is how the parcels lay out. So it's about seventy-four acres. Again, Commissioner Harvey, we we established it in two thousand and five. Uh, we have a base share of two thousand eleven with the original adopted budget in two thousand twelve. And the original term was fifteen years, but the COVID expansion added two years to it. So right now it's seventeen years. And because the trigger date for the collection of tax increment is actually tax year twenty twenty-five. We haven't collected any tax increment on this project area thus far. So it's all all the growth that's happened in the areas, the offices that that I mentioned that have been there, the Maverick. Um, anything else, the Larry Miller dealership down here at the bottom, all of that has. Flow flowed through to the entities over the last, you know, number of nineteen years. And so. We uh, we adopted this project area back when the taxing entity committee rules were in place. And so as we look to seek an amendment, it would happen through the taxing entity committee as well. And so what we're here today for is to talk to you all as a commission. Um, in terms of our proposal, so that you can give your two representatives some guidance as to how to come to the tech and what to and how to vote essentially.
And just as a as a reminder, um, a couple of months ago, Stephanie and I were appointed to represent the county on any tech committees.
Remember that?
Okay. So here's the timeline of that. Again, two thousand and five, the creation year, the base year is two thousand and eleven with an original valuation of about nineteen million. Um, there is a nine million dollar cap. So that's the original budget that we're operating under now is nine million dollars, seventeen years. A hundred percent participation by the taxing entities, and that's all of them in in that tech body.
So that's the original.
That's the original.
One hundred. Okay.
Um.
That's project. Go back one slide. Is that your confirmed project area or what you're proposing?
That's the confirmed one that was adopted in two thousand.
Okay, that's the adopted project. That's two thousand and five.
Right, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, we had an amendment to the budget that the tech approved, and that was essentially um, adjusting that tax increment collection period. So the trigger was supposed to happen by twenty twenty, and then the tech decided that it was okay to happen between twenty twenty-five. And in twenty twenty-four, we made that election for for twenty twenty-five. And then twenty twenty-one is the COVID extension and then and then twenty twenty-four brings us uh, here today for the amendment proposal. So we've talked a lot about the American First Campus. They by far are the big project that this area is um, is situated for. But. Given the size of that area, there are some other opportunities that we hope to unlock that aren't. That are not um, feasible right now due to the lack of infrastructure. And so that includes additional housing, some additional hospitality. Freeway hotel, I think, will be important as um, the the Olympics come in the next uh, ten years. Uh, as Hill Air Force Base does their expansion. Uh, certainly retail is important for Riverdale City as well as the area. And then some additional commercial offices that becomes more in vogue. Um, I won't go over all these, but essentially our. Um I won't go over all these, but essentially our development objectives are the same objectives that we feel you all have as the county. Building a strong tax base, building a jo- a strong um job base at the higher wages. And America First certainly will be doing that uh as they consolidate their campus. They're looking at bringing over seven thousand uh jobs to this location. That's part of a consolidation of other locations as well as growth as well.
Will they still operate off of nineteen hundred and Roy? I moved to here.
I I think they'll close all those down, putting everything here on the west bench.
Okay, thank you.
So as I mentioned, here's kind of the American First uh layout right now. Over the last little bit, there has been some work done um to enhance what they currently have. We vacated a road that that went um through the area. It was uh. Cozy Dale?
Yeah, Cozy Dale Lane.
Yep, and uh fifteen hundred is under construction now, so that'll be in a better place and more suited to. To help facilitate the development. It's bigger, the roundabout um pushes way more traffic than Cozy Dale ever did. So you can see that there's some things happening now to facilitate this, um but this is the American First Campus vision. You can see that there's ten buildings there. Um the other buildings are parking structures, so these are their ten corporate campus buildings. There's an interior kind of plaza. All of these buildings face each other. So they're really trying to create this walkable campus uh that is really nice. I'll show you some pictures. And then they have all of their onsite parking built into these parking structures. This is the ops building that they just built. Here, and this is their data center. Those are the only two buildings out of the existing buildings that are there that will remain. This one here and then the ops building is over here. So these other buildings are meant to be uh replaced. With this campus. Pretty awesome. And then obviously we have in this uh other color, I don't know, what color would that be? Skin or color?
Salmon.
Salmon. Um that would be future development opportunities for the housing, commercial office, other things, retail.
How much acreage is in that little salmon section, you think?
Um so I.
Just the little salmon section, that little bonus, the bonus.
Northern piece up there is twelve, isn't it? Let's go wig.
Okay, yeah, I think the difference between what we have now, it's more than double. The 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 future proposed area is more than double, including that up there.
That's a good piece.
So that's what they're calling kind of their first um not phase, but their first set of buildings. So they they have ten scheduled. Uh if you're familiar with the area, this is the Maverick that's there now. This is a local branch that they wanted to build. Um this is the uh data center and the ops building is over here. And so these are the buildings that they would wanna do as part of their first segment, and then the other um section may be built up here, going back to this thing. So we're looking at this area essentially in this picture here. So pretty massive. These buildings are about a hundred and fifty um thousand square feet. And then the parking associated with it, and here's that new fifteen hundred with a roundabout here. Typical picture of what those buildings would look like, so this is high-end development, high design. Um the site looks great. So this is looking south. There's the Maverick here, so this would be their first building that they're, or excuse me, this is their first building, first parking structure. That they would intend to build.
And there's the big D there on the left.
Yep, yeah, yep. So this would be one of the best corporate campuses in the state and some of the best buildings, I think, in Weaver County for sure. And then hospitality would fill in um along the freeway there, uh some retail. There's a hospitality option to replace the Motel Six and then housing and commercial on the north end.
And Tesla's where?
Tesla's right here.
Thank you.
Oh, no, sorry, it's right, uh yeah, right here.
Hold on, just a minute, Brandon. They got a lot of internet out there. Just I just wanted to make sure I filled in the gap there with the commissioner.
Can I use their phone?
Uh huh.
Okay, good, good to know. Are you having Wi-Fi problems?
I know.
Inside.
No, he does.
You can't use your car without the phone.
That's right. Oh, I've heard, I've heard about your.
I don't.
Your little debacle.
Yeah, they'll never go away. Red Rock. By the way, they're not there on Sundays and Mondays, just in case you ever go up there without a phone, they don't, they can't use it.
Your car's dead.
Yeah.
So here's here's a list of some of the improvements and and Steve mentioned a few of those, uh but this area has just sat vacant. For decades because it just lacks the infrastructure to support any kind of development. And so even though America First is up there, their growth plans and the growth plans of any other uses that we wanna see there, the hotel. Um more commercial, more housing, that's all hampered by the fact that we um are really constrained by our traffic flow. By our water and sewer improvements, the power lines are in the wrong spot, so there's just a whole host of things that need to be dealt with. And in doing so, um it would not only unlock the development potential for America First, but it unlocks that full acreage. That has been sitting vacant for so many years. So we're anticipating with our engineers um looking at uh uh north of about thirty-nine million dollars. For infrastructure investment, um and that's just, that's just looking at uh what we know today.
Hold on a second, Brandon. I just wanna make a comment here. If you notice up here, commissioners.
Yes.
We've got traffic, water, sewer improvements. The reason I'm bringing this up, we had a conversation earlier today about Western Weaver County. It just happened to be three of the four.
Exactly.
It's exactly what I brought up.
Exactly what you brought up.
Just just as a reminder. Well, thank you for that slide. Just a reminder. Hey, I'm good. Thank you so much. That's so insightful.
I had the, I had the same thought. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, sure. See, great mind, snake eye.
Well, I've talked to you guys enough to know that um not every project is. Um suitable for RDA tax increment, but infrastructure projects almost always are. Because that's really the the right tool for the right job.
Yeah.
Um and we think that this is one of those areas, just by observation, has been, has suffered for many, many years due to lack of infrastructure. And now we have this catalytic company who's wanting to do a project unlike any other in Weaver County. And from from that kind of investment, we all can kind of jump in and and start to participate in ways that will really make that area. Um turn into something that it otherwise can't be. Steve mentioned um some of these traffic improvements, so here's forty-four hundred here. Um so we're anticipating the need for a a four-way light right through here.
Hmm.
Um there's a a a full interchange that is being uh studied right now with what's called a slip ramp. So if you've been down at a hundred six south by the um South Town Mall, they have a slip ramp right off of that intersection into the mall parking lot. So that is a tool to help alleviate traffic off of Riverdale Road. Um and put it right into the into the development, which is where people would be coming and going from. But that doesn't mean we wouldn't need improvements here at fifteen hundred, so that needs to be widened, the right turn um lane would need to be installed and some other things like that. So lots of traffic considerations, just to make sure that we're we're not killing our residential neighborhood. What we have some concerns about in our council has some concerns about is. People might leave this development down forty-four hundred to to avoid Riverdale Road.
Mm-hmm.
And that's gonna clog up our neighborhoods and so.
Absolutely.
This is an important consideration to figure out, you know, how to get them out this way.
Are they gonna go up on, they're gonna go up on Parker Drive too, try to get out on Thirty First.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's insightful that you guys are putting that into the overall plan.
Makes sense.
And this really opens up Roy to do something and maybe even Ogden to do something with forty-four hundred going up to nineteen hundred.
I agree.
Because now we have, it's like a big pipe into a little pipe, right? So we have the ability to get them from this area up to nineteen hundred. That's a big state road that flows a lot of traffic. And so if they would do something with that, that could really help the whole situation as well. Okay, so um talking numbers, so right now our current project plan and budget has, as I mentioned, a budget cap at nine million dollars. For seventeen years with all of the entities participating at a hundred percent. And keep in mind, this is a tech body vote, so it's different than what you might be used to with the interlocal agreements where each entity negotiates their own. Participation. This is a body, two-thirds vote. Um and so as those seventeen years pass and as development happens, the entities receive zero pass-through benefit of that. And receive all their benefit on the future valuation. Um what we're proposing is um a a larger area, so the area on the right is. So this little line delineates the original project area to the new proposed project area. So now we're capturing all of that land to the north and some of the intersection area up here. Uh we're proposing the same seventeen years, but at a ninety percent participation with a higher budget cap. So the the budget cap significantly higher, fifty-two, six fifty. But if you look at the lower table, you'll see that over that seventeen years at ninety percent, the county will receive what we estimate to be approximately two million dollars. Through that seventeen years, not to mention the future value of the new investment, which we are pegging to be about. Six eighty to seven fifty, hundred million dollars. So at the end of seventeen years, we'll have a quarter, three-quarters of a billion-dollar asset, hopefully, that your valuation would be based on. And so there's, and I'll give this spreadsheet to you stat, so you can go through all those numbers. But essentially, that return um to the entities is massive, right? That kind of valuation. So here's a summary of that. Um we're not asking uh to change the base year, so two thousand eleven would be the base year. Same valuation for those um for the whole area now. Um and then the project area would grow a little more than double to capture that north end. Uh we'd we'd ask the cap be increased to fifty-two, six fifty at a ninety percent um value, or ninety percent participation. And we intend, as I said, roughly six fifty to uh north of that, depends on what we can do on that north end. And so we estimate the county uh contribution over that seventeen years at ninety percent to be about nine point nine million dollars.
Could I pick up with questions?
Mm-hmm.
If you go back that side, you have thirty-nine million dollars of infrastructure and you're getting fifty-two million dollars. The um so first question is just about that. What's the rest of the money gonna be used for? And I assume it's answered on your spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Um you're keeping the base year twenty eleven, so that means when we trigger this, we're actually gonna lose money, right? Because we've already recognized the growth from twenty eleven till now, so would there be an issue with bumping the base year up? To what it is now, so that we actually don't take a hit, because I mean, we're not going, our property tax growth this year is gonna be less than one percent. I would hate to have negative property tax growth.
Right.
Because this base year is taking it up. And then the third question, I mean, and I think I already know the answer, but why not just dissolve the original RDA and create a new CRA? Um is it because maybe we're worried that we can't get everybody to participate at ninety percent for fifteen or seventeen years or? Why, why amend this one? Why not just get rid of it and build a new one?
So let's start with that one. We looked at both options and and you've had these conversations longer than I have, but um. Because we are so far down the road, we've had a million different conversations and we do have some uh uh agreements on our side in place already. I we think that just an amendment to the existing RDA would be the most applicable um through the tech. Um the other question about adjusting the base year, we we're running those numbers now. Um so we're certainly open to that discussion because we knew that that would be uh have an effect, so I think it just depends on. What the trickle is through the rest of the pro forma, cuz that will certainly have um an impact on the numbers. And the difference between the thirty-nine and the fifty-two is the thirty-nine is an estimate on what we know now, right? And that's the present value, so it's actually gonna be more, this is the future value. If you future value this to the present value of the thirty-nine, it's actually less than we need. Does that make sense?
Hmm.
Um so this, does everyone get that? We're talking about future dollars versus today and the thirty-nine is today's dollars.
Yeah.
Um.
You still not, still would not allow us to have any admin costs covered cuz the previous one didn't cover admin, didn't have housing or anything like that.
That's right, so we waived housing and we waived admin. We would keep that the same.
So you waived housing?
We waived housing and waived admin in the original creation.
You're gonna waive it here?
That's right, we would keep all of those things the same.
Yeah, yeah, cuz if you well know, I don't, I'm not a fan of tax increment on housing. Comes from the state. You've had conversations with number of people down there. That doesn't work.
Yeah.
And and the previous one had a hundred percent, so we wouldn't be getting nothing, really.
It would stop at nine million.
That's true.
So I mean, that's that's the.
That's true.
A hundred percent for nine million, which is ninety percent of fifty-two million.
Yeah.
And and the key there is that, as it always is, is the post-RDA evaluation, right? So there's certainly a scenario that. America First could develop a few of those buildings, but they would be constrained by the lack of um infrastructure. And so that's what was originally anticipated under the nine million, is that there was no big America First expansion back there. It was a a business park.
Some warehouse gym.
And so that's, that was the limited vision of what they wanted to do and thus you got the nine million. Now we have this bigger vision of unlocking all of that land instead of just the southern portion. And so that post-RDA valuation really only becomes possible through the investment of the entities of the fifty-two. And that's the payoff. It's a shorter term, a lot of participation upfront, shorter term, but a massive payoff over time. And that's, that's in perpetuity money, right? So that's forever and ever. Good questions.
The base year, and I'm gonna, I'll look back from the documents, but the base year you have is nineteen million and the base year that I was given was twelve.
Let's double check that.
Okay.
I got that from a resolution.
Okay.
Of the tech.
Yeah, I'll I'll, I was just gonna look that up in here, but this is what was in the document that Roger gave me, so.
I would, I would really hate to have negative property tax growth, so I appreciate you.
Can't do that.
At adjusting the base.
Deal breaker. I think we've gotta adjust that.
Yeah, for sure. And and you're talking just for the new, the new land, right? Or would you do it for the old?
Well, we've already recognized the revenue for those, the buildings that went in now, right? We've already been collecting additional tax revenue now to say, well, the base year's here, you're gonna give me a hundred percent or ninety percent of the increment. We're going to lose all that revenue we have been.
Yeah, yeah.
So I would say we would wanna bump the base year up of everything. I mean, the new area doesn't have much value, right? So really, it's the old area that we're worried about.
Yeah, so like I said, we're actually running those numbers. I didn't bring that shirt with me today, so we'll make sure we get that in there, see what that does.
I mean, I can't imagine it's gonna be that material to the calculation, but it would, it would hurt us.
Yeah.
And as everyone else, you know, we we need extra growth. We don't need less growth.
I don't know what the school would do. Maybe they might, cuz they, America First participates in the school a lot. But what did we tell the county? We made a presentation on Black Pine to the school district. What did we tell them?
So with this one, uh because it's a T E C, cuz it's under a U R A.
Mm-hmm.
Um they have a, they haven't voted. The county, the school has a vote, but we don't have interlocals, so there's no presentation to make. Because they will come to the table, like Stefan will come to the table and vote when they, when they vote on this.
Okay.
So we're gonna vote with your recommendation, whatever you recommend.
Sure, but I just wanna make sure this, the big part of that's the school board.
Right, they have a, they have a vote on the on the T E C.
They get one vote.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we.
Who represents, sorry, who represents them on the T E C?
Um his first name's Robert. I can't remember his last name.
Peterson, Peterson.
Probably the. Peterson, yeah.
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 So Commissioner Harvey, we're anticipating um the need to do this same thing with them. Because as we're asking your tech representatives to vote higher than your policy might allow. We understand that their policy um is the same and so, or similar, so we would ask, we would go to them and have the same meeting. And ask their board to give direction to their representative to vote uh at a higher level than your policy.
And listen, there's no question that America First is a great, wonderful, one of the best community partners we have in the area. They're just phenomenal. And so would you, we would likely be in favor of doing everything would be fiscally right for us. But we can't cut off our foot either on that. We can't go backwards like Scott Park was saying, Mr. Park was saying on the tax revenues. There there's some. I don't think that any of the three of us are bold to do.
No.
We, if we do that, it's a shit. We've gotta collect that from somebody else, which I'm not prepared to do.
Right.
Yeah.
Unless we take in Brigham City as a north Weaver County.
Or part of Davis County. If you can give us part of Davis. Revenue, then we can maybe talk.
Yeah.
Do you see what that?
So Brandon, I think maybe next steps, uh get that analysis to, send that to me and I'll get with Stefan Scott on that. And then we'll um have another discussion with commission.
That's fair. I've been up on some of those roads already, all legally, by the way, and uh.
That's surprising, but good.
Well, it's not from way anyway, that it's uh, that it's, it's really, it's, it's nice to see that change from. Gosh, from the seventies, really, for me, how that's all changed.
They just opened that new building last week. There's a big billboard sign. Have you seen that? That's gone in, that's visible from I fifteen. It looks really nice. I was in the building. Everything is just very modern and.
It looks really nice, I was in the building, everything is just very modern and high-tech. You walk in a room, all the lights turn on, vans turn on, it's pretty crazy, but it's nice, they they don't cut corners.
Well, and the infrastructure improvements are going to be really significant to that area, and not just Riverdale, but like Brandon said, the entire county, and. I think you're being very modest with the thirty-nine, it's going to be a lot worse, but. We need to, we need to take that into consideration too, as we're looking at the, at at the percentages, because.
I think your thirty-nine's way low.
Which is why, you know, and it's going to have a a major impact in the in the county, so I think. I think what they're proposing is is very reasonable, let's just make sure we're not going backwards, and if we can't adjust that, I think that's a good compromise for all of us.
Okay, and you guys in support of the ninety percent?
We are because of the infrastructure lift, yes.
Scott, Scott?
I I I mean, I, this is the first I'm seeing of this, so I I. We we like each other, we'd love to have this conversation over and over and over again of how much do you invest now? And and give up in the short run to to get a big payoff, and I'm always, well, we've got to survive the medium term, short term, to get to the long term.
Sure.
So I, I mean, I look at at fifty-two million dollars, ninety percent, I just, and I always swallow hard at ninety percent, you know, I would love to get it down to fifty or seventy-five. I realize that, I'm assuming when I see the spreadsheet, it's not going to work out, um, so this is the first I'm seeing, so it just takes me a little bit of time to digest it, it's the same. Conversation we've had half a dozen times in front of you guys, with ninety percent is just hard for me to swallow.
Yeah, very aggressive, well, I I haven't seen that number since.
What your outcome is with the school district, I would be curious to see where what their temperature is.
Yeah, so we're um trying to get a meeting with them similar to this.
Okay.
Um, we uh have met with Central Weaver Su- um sewer district, Kevin Hall represents them and all the other entities. Like nine-one-one and and mosquito and and Weaver Basin, so. That's kind of the tech body, as soon as we have the school district, um, we'll get, we'll come back to you, we're hoping to have the tech meeting. In August sometime, um, we'd like it July, but I don't think with the holidays and things.
We're all going to be gone.
We're going to get it, so hopefully early in August, we'll be able to come back to you again with some information about these questions and. The status of the other entities, and then you can give your folks the direction that you feel is important, and then we'll have the tech, and away we go.
Great presentation, thanks.
Thank you for thinking of us, Shell, you're in a good place, and you're lucky to have Michelle.
I know that.
I've known Michelle for a lot of years, you're re- really, you're good there.
Thanks.
You like her, you want to keep her, spend it for a little bit.
Yeah.
I like it.
Don't you don't say that about me, Har.
Well, you're still trying to earn your stripes, I haven't owned, I haven't known you as long as I've known Shell.
It's been eighteen years.
Yeah, it's not long enough. Not long, but how many years for, how many years have?
I started accounting before.
There you go.
Really?
That's twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Just there, get there, just keep going, once you get as many as you can. And you're at least.
So Brandon, I get spreadsheet and start on the paper version.
Have you ever tried those, uh, have you ever tried those russet pedrotos or uh the the reds? I just was wondering. I can't even sit in this room, brooks without.
Thanks, good.
Hey, thanks, good to see you, yeah, take care.
Thank you, Stephen. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brandon, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm glad you guys.
Did you know that uh another business that Steve used to work for, Maverick bought their property, it was Gibby Floral up there.
Gibby's?
Really?
Quite a florist. I won't, I won't share those with you, because if you knew, it would not look at you.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, all right, thank you, that takes us to the last item on our agenda, Commissioners, I'll look for a vote to adjourn. Second. All in favor? I, we're now adjourned. Brandon, while you're back in the room, will you click the reminder? Yeah, don't forget your jump drive.